Roll call.
Present.
Here.
Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Yeah.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Irvin.
Mr. Lovett.
Here.
Here. Okay, we have public comment on the proposed ordinance rescinding ordinance number 2023-12, which placed a question on the November 7, 2023 municipal election ballot to amend Article 8, Section 804 Luzerne County Home Rule Charter. Karen Baranowski.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. At first, I always like to thank County Manager Prokomo. Prokomo, she is one of my heroes of the county, and I do want to thank the council members for all your hard work, even though I don't always agree with the outcomes. But I was glad to see it appears the ordinance placing a balance ballot question, making changes to the election board for the November election will be rescinded tonight. This unwarranted question favorable to the council's 10-1 Republican supermajority has caused months of unnecessary confusion, stress, and consternation, demeaning our county election operations. And I ask going forward that positive support and any requested funding be given to the Luzerne County Bureau of Elections to strengthen and improve their work for the citizens of our county. And I want I ask that you please put this question to rest definitively and assure citizens it will not show up in the 2024 primary ballot in a different form. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Raybo, nice to see you in person tonight.
Thank you. No technical difficulties. Mark Raybo Hazelton. I just want to say, this will be my probably my shortest comment for tonight, and that is, it should never happened. Should have went with the Study Commission, since it's a structural change, and also that I think that you need to actually have something to where if there's a conflict with the home rule law, and I will mention it further later. This is who makes the law. The state makes the law. That changes home rule optional plan. And here are the people, one of the bodies that makes the law. It's not this council. Okay, so I hope council can be cognizant of the constitution of the state, which you all took an oath, as I said last meeting, took an oath to the constitution, took an oath to uphold the laws that apply throughout the state and the Home Rule Charter. I took that oath as well, serving on an authority. So I just hope and pray that council from this time forward recognizes that and embraces that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this proposed ordinance only? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed. Public hearings adjourned at 5:55, so we'll begin at 6:01. Turn your mics off.
Recording stopped.
All right, it is 6:01. We'll call the voting session to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance, but I would like everybody to take a moment of silence for the innocent lives that were lost in the reprehensible act of terrorism in Israel. Thank you.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'd like to just add to that. Thank you for the moment's silence, but I think it's important and necessary for this council body to publicly denounce the barbaric actions of Hamas and his militant jihad over there, and throw our full 100% support behind the Israeli people and that of Israel, particularly our to state our thoughts and prayers go out to the Jewish people of Luzerne County, who many have direct and immediate relatives in that region of the country. So I'd just like them to know, and I think I speak for all of council, that we're thinking of you when you're facing just these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Venus.
Present.
Mr. Loebard.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Irvin.
Mr. Lovett.
Here.
Here. Any deletions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed. Agenda is adopted. We now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Mr. Raybo.
Mark Raybo Hazelton, first, on agenda item number five on the Study Commission question, I would like to ask council to maybe ask the solicitor if maybe this is a little bit premature, considering that, I don't know, the 2023 election didn't happen yet. So how is this easy? How is this possible to put a Study Commission question on the ballot for 2024 primary when the 2023 election didn't happen yet? And I say this because under Home Rule Optional Plan law, the only way to put a Study Commission question on the ballot for the year that you are intending to put that Study Commission question on would have to fall no earlier than 20 Tuesdays before a primary or general election, and cannot be no later than 13 Tuesdays before a primary or general election. So I don't know, and I'm not sure if this is in the charter or admin code, but once you introduce the ordinance, how long does the council have in order to have to put that on the voting session? I'm not I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I think maybe that needs to be looked at, you know, in terms of if you're gonna introduce it, that might be a problem. On number six, the U-DAG funds for the Hotel Sterling. I would like to say, as far as the I found those monies in the budget years ago, okay? And I asked previous councils, Mr. McGinley, Mr. Irvin, remember, well, and maybe Mr. Perry and Ms. McDermott, and probably you, Madam Chair, remember, I asked twice to use two separate times to utilize those U-DAG monies. One was the 911 project. We were told, no, you can't touch that money, because if HUD asks for the $6 million repayment, you can't do that. And then again, I asked for the county roads. And that was in, I think it was two years ago, in the budget during the budget meetings. And then once again, said no, because of the possibility of the of HUD asking for the $6 million. So I would like to know what changed, and also, to be quite clear, as a member of the Redevelopment Authority Board, this is what we were given, a one-page summary, very scant, and, you know, for the LSA application, and that's all we got. And I asked as a board member for more information. So I would like to pass this around to council members, as you guys can consider this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. If it gets passed around to council members, Ms. Lawrence has to make a copy of it and post it to the website, if you don't mind. Okay. Karen Baranowski, do you want to speak again?
No, I don't have anything else. I wasn't.
Okay, thank you. John Sahaski.
John Sahaski, Wilkes-Barre. I just have some questions about this Sterling project with the I would I'd be very critical of these gentlemen. They're like, do we know if they have the funding and that they've shown you that they have the funding? Because when they acquired this property on March 22, 2018, they lied to Wilkes-Barre City Council. They said that this would be privately funded, and they went, they've been going to all different kinds of state and other ways of trying to fund it that are publicly funded, like Mr. Bruke here, like he told a lie. He lied to the city council. He said this would be privately funded. And you could look it up and watch the council meeting on from Wilkes-Barre City Council meeting on YouTube, 3:22:18, around, I could tell you, it's around 58 minutes, where he said this would be this would be privately funded. And it seems that every time that this group just keeps looking for public funding. So I don't know if they have the finances, like they've been going all over. I'm pretty sure I seen Mr. Bruke down on the square, panhandled for money for this project, because they don't have it. So please, just check into their finances. Make sure they have it. Get some kind of bank statement, get something, because it doesn't, you know, they had they acquired this property in 2018, in March 2018, and they didn't do anything. They're blaming COVID for backing it up and everything. They had a year, you know, a year and three quarters to actually do something to do something with the property, and they have done nothing. So I would be very critical and, you know, look into everything that they have to actually show that they have financing before you guys, you know, do anything. Like, Mr. Irvin, you said you were quoted in the paper that said this is the last mile they're funding. Are you guys sure of that? Are you sure that they're, you know, in their last mile funding? Because like, they went to, I can't think of the board's name. They were trying to get funding for their parking lot. Like, they were asking for an LSA grant for $2 million for it. I think they got money from you guys from the American Rescue Plan, I believe, $1 million. So like, it was like a $3.7 million parking lot that they wanted to build, Parkade, and the funding they seem to be coming up with is $700,000 to the best of my knowledge. So like, it just doesn't seem like they have the funding to do the project. They're kind of jokers. They're just playing everybody. So please, look into their funding. Make sure that they have the funding before you guys approve any kind of money, because, you know, it's really starting to look like the last, you know, 2013 all over again with this this hotel project. Hotel projects in Wilkes-Barre usually just end up being mounds of dirt. We have two of them that are mounds of dirt. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Controller Griffith.
I'm gonna comment on number six as well, on the U-DAG grant. First of all, it's an ordinance that's on the agenda to be introduced. I don't believe this is an ordinance required action. This is a budget transfer. It says right at the top, to transfer U-DAG funds for the hotel project. And let's see how this requires an ordinance. A transfer doesn't require an ordinance. A budget amendment requires an ordinance, which means we receive monies that we didn't anticipate, and so therefore you have to amend the budget to account for that money. This is not a budget amendment, or, yeah, this is not a budget amendment, does not require an ordinance. On number six, I'll read my statement into the record for the council. I read in astonishment last week of a proposal by a member of county council to provide $3 million of federal U-DAG money to develop for the Hotel Sterling Lot. The Hotel Sterling Lot was audited by my office in 2012, and it was determined that that audit, that funds were not used properly according to the project outline. And here we go again. The Hotel Lot received over $10 million to restore historical structure with a promise that it would be a hotel convention center. Nothing ever happened then, and nothing will happen now. And people who ask for the money will not be held accountable for the waste. There are many projects in Luzerne County that could use $3 million, for example. Roads that are crumbling, several county office buildings without a generator for backup power in case of emergency, a prison that is severely in need of continuous repair, and this council should be looking to keep these funds in the capital plan and not fund a private developer. Let's consider using the $6 million for things that Luzerne County needs that cost the taxpayers money every single day. For the past three years, we've been hearing about closed bridges, tax increases, bad roads, lack of funds for capital plan, and a prison that's almost unable to function due to leaking roofs and bad elevators. The ability to take $3 million of found money that has not been approved by the federal inspector general or HUD and provide it to the private developer is insane. It should be dismissed and taken off the agenda. HUD confirmed with me less than two hours ago that that money is not available for dispersment. They said that they're finding that they really deal to this county back in 2019 is the same finding today. Nothing has changed. So if we have an opinion from some, as I understand, there's a legal opinion that says we could spend that money, I hope their errors and omissions insurance covers that. Because to Mr. McGinley's point, when we spend that $6 million, and we have to pay it back, I hope to God council has the money for that, or that LA Greenleaf and Dean Zero and Mission Insurance will cover that. Because that money is not available to be spent according to Nate Dabbinum from the director of HUD as of two hours ago. So I don't know what opinion you guys are going by, but that certainly is not available. The other thing is on the project, do we have a start date when that project's gonna start? When's he gonna stick a shovel in the ground and get that project going, or are we gonna earmark money on the hopes that it'll get started, and at some point not have the money back in time for somebody else to use it? I think there's a lot of open-ended questions here that need to be answered long before we do an introduction of an ordinance to get this money spent. I think somebody's in a big hurry for no reason.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin.
Members of council, fellow citizens, Gregory Griffin Swarfield, I want to speak on agenda item number three. I think it's a good idea to approve the use of opioid settlement funds for the medication assisted program at the Luzerne County prison. What's happening now is inmates are getting out in a weakened state, and many of them are overdosing. So any any assistance we can from the opioid settlement money, which is going to be $2 million a year for 25 years approximately. So the formation of the County Opioid Settlement Committee, it's urgent. And it's going to save lives. So what council's doing by forming this committee or commission is so important. We should remember that we've lost over 1,000 young people in Luzerne County in six years. That's equivalent to three jumbo jets crashing in six years. I think if that happened, there'd be all kinds of federal investigations about why are these three planes, why did these three planes crash? 1,000 young people in six years have died from fentanyl and overdoses. And you don't hear you don't hear any elected officials talking about it. So what county council's doing with this opioid commission, I applaud you. Hopefully, instead of 208 people dying a year ago, if the commission is operated properly and monitored properly by council, unfortunately, maybe only 50 will die. We should remember that we have we should remember that we're third. We're third out of 67 Pennsylvania counties, according to Assistant District Attorney at county at District Attorney's Office. We're third out of 67 Pennsylvania counties for young people dying from opioids overdoses. So we're behind Allegheny County and Philly. So it's bad. It's real bad. And, you know, I don't even hear the newspapers talking about it. I don't hear anyone talking about it. 1,000 young people in six years. So definitely we should help the inmates. Most of them become useful citizens after being released. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on agenda items only? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All favor? Abstentions opposed? Minutes are adopted. The first item is the introduction of ordinance adopting the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. We'll turn it over to Manager Prokomo.
Honorable council members, Controller Griffith, and Luzerne County citizens. I wanted to take a few moments to share some thoughts of our budget proposal for the upcoming fiscal year. Right now, I want to thank our budget team. Best and the brightest were assembled. Without them, the strides we have made cannot have been achieved. So let me acknowledge our Fab Five. Mary Roselle, Chris Alessandro, Mark Majikis, Adam Wernes, and Tom Sico. The administration understands that each and every one of you works tirelessly to contribute to the vibrant community's growth and prosperity. As stewards of your hard-earned tax dollars, we are committed to ensuring transparency, accountability, and responsible financial management. We are thrilled to formally announce that despite the challenges we face, our budget team has successfully devised a budget plan that does not involve any tax increases. We recognize the importance of keeping the burden on our citizens as low as possible, especially during these challenging times. Additionally, we have taken a proactive approach to free spending temporarily. This decision allows us to meticulously evaluate our expenditures, ensuring that every dollar is allocated wisely and efficiently. By doing so, we strive to maintain the highest standard of fiscal responsibility while safeguarding the essential services and programs our community relies on. Our commitment to you, our valued citizens, remains unwavering. We are determined to deliver vital public services, support economic growth, and foster a nurturing environment for all Luzerne County citizens. We will continue investing in infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and other critical areas that contribute to our collective well-being. We firmly believe that through prudent financial management and innovative thinking, we can navigate these uncertain times while paving the way for a brighter future. We encourage you all to actively participate in the budgetary process by sharing your ideas and concerns and aspirations with us. Together, we can build a stronger, more resilient community that thrives for generations to come. Over the next few weeks, we will be working with council to finalize the budget. In years past, I heard the phrase that once the county manager submits the budget to council, it becomes council's budget. I like to think that it becomes our budget. Thank you for your continued trust and support. And right now, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mary Roselle.
Thank you, Rinalda. I too just wanted to thank my fellow team members of the Budget Committee. I mean, it really was a pleasure working with all of them, as well as each and every division head. Over the past six weeks, I have to say that we all worked really closely together as a team, every single division. We went through every line item. We had everyone, you know, take responsibility for their budget and really understand what's in it. So I think that that's really important. And going forward, I think that'll mean a lot to make sure that we can stay on track and deliver a 0% tax increase budget as we have this year. We also were able to include a reserve, a $255,000 reserve number, which is $10,000 higher than it was last year. So we, again, went through every single line item to make sure we maximized all of our revenue while still making sure that we were operating in the most efficient way possible. So I thank all of the division heads for that. Um, as you know, we talked about the debt previously, you know, we continue to pay down our debt. We know that we have a really good credit rating at this point. PFM was our last last meeting to talk about that. So PFM was her last, last meeting to talk about that, so you know, we do have some borrowing ability there, not that we need it. But you know, we're happy to report that the county is in, in good health. We did include in this budget an increase for non represented employees of 2.5%. As well as we increased the healthcare percentage that we're going to be contributing. And the big difference in this budget that you'll see that you haven't seen before is a vacancy factor. So as many of you probably know, you know, we have a hard time filling a lot of the positions that we have at the county. Um, we're working really hard to make sure we can fill, fill the positions so that services aren't affected. But there is, there are always vacant positions, so we've done some research and we all agreed that to be super conservative. We would do a 1% vacancy factor, which you'll see in here of only the general fund payroll costs. So that amounts to $520,000, and if you look at the vacancy reports, you'll see there's, they're much hotter than that. But we do have that included in here and going forward, we believe that that should always be included because there is always going to be a vacancy factor. You know, even if we're at the point where we're filling all the positions we have, it still takes time. So um, I want to just let everyone know that we're here to answer any questions that you have, please, as you go through the binder. If you have a question, feel free to call me anytime, I'm happy to answer it, as well as the other members of my team. So thank you for allowing us to submit the budget, and again, thanks for everyone's hard work in helping me do that.
Thank you all.
Questions of council that go forward the next two months? If you have questions on the budget. Try to get questions through email through appropriate channels. Give them time to respond or to research and that, we don't save all our questions for when they're at the podium here.
Thank you, I agree. Any other comments, okay, move on. Number two, motion to introduce ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for Luzern County, this is operations. Second, roll call.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinn.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving use of opioid settlement proceeds to fund the MAP program at the Luzern County fractional facility for 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes, number four, motion to adopt ordinance rescinding ordinance number 202312, which placed a question on November 7th, 2023 municipal election ballot.
Second.
Another question, Senator. I just want to come out again and publicly say that I was in favor of government study commission back in the early part of the year. And I received many emails over the last several days from county residents. Me accusing me of voting that down, when in fact I voted for it. And it was the same email, same ordered email from anybody. And I think from the very beginning, as I stated last meeting, the question was well founded. And it was studied by our office of law, and I'm, I'm not gonna support it, thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second, we have a roll call please.
Support makes a good point, I know with all of seeing certain emails, many different. But part of the email that really bothered me most of all is the fact that we mentioned funding of the election. If you go back in our history, we're in Luzern County, we always had a head of the election. We had a young lady who was the chair, yeah, this, this fall. She asked for deputy, had not been included in the budget. Council went ahead and included that position in the budget so that they would have a backup and an administrative person. Going forward, several years, we had another election situation, the election group come in and help us. And they came forward and said, hey, you need a third administrative position, I think they called it operations. And that sort of went along with that and supplied that position and paid for those positions. Council has made an effort. To make sure we have the right kind of funding, make sure we have the right kind of personnel. I mean, whether you like it or dislike it, I think council has made an effort to be very fair with that department. And it's a very important department, I think everyone wants to do it like that. So I just want to make that as a, as a note, because I think that part of those emails is the same direction.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinn.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
No.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
No.
Mr. Venus.
No.
No.
Let's go.
Yes. Motion passes, number five, motion to introduce ordinance placing a government study commission question on the 2024 primary election ballot. And designate the number of members to serve and said commission.
So.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinley.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
No.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
No.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Let's go.
Yes. Okay, it's introduced. Number six, motion to introduce ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for Luzern County to transfer Udag funds to the Hotel Sterling site project.
Some, second. Like to make that.
Okay.
Steve Baruch's name is in there, I'd like to change that to H and N Investment LLC.
H and.
The, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance, remove Steve Baruch's name in there as a person and put H and N Investment LLC.
H and N Investment LLC.
Correct.
Is that what we're looking?
Yeah. Right.
Third, whereas.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion for that amendment, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll call on the amendment.
Mr. McGinn.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
McDermott, yes. Let's go.
Yes. Amendment passes, we have a.
I have a question.
Sure.
I just want to make it known that this was kind of brought out of left field, I don't know who H and if, I mean, I may know them. There's no information to make a decision on whether to vote to introduce this ordinance. Now, when I introduced my ordinance, I brought it to a work session first, so we can discuss it, so everybody knew the premise of the ordinance. And I don't know if I can support this without having enough information to make a decision.
Sure, just to bring it to your attention, the motion to introduce, just the introduction is on this agenda, but there is a presentation on the work session.
Watch everybody.
Which one?
Yes, and they're out. So they'll, they'll be able to give us the presentation of the work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is not voting for you.
Just introduce it.
Just these four votes to be introduced, roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. Perry.
No.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
No.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
For the introduction, yes.
Mr. McDermott. Uh, yes, to the introduction. Mr. McGinn.
No.
Let's go.
No. It's introduced. Number seven, nominations and appointments to boards and commissions, is the Luzern County 444 Airport Advisory Board for one term ending at the end of 2025. Do we have a motion to open nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed, nominations are open.
Motion to nominate Aaron Connors.
Second.
Do we have a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed? Page, do we have a motion for the resolution for Aaron Connors?
Shobu.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott. Yes. Mr. McGinn.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations, Aaron Connors. Um, number eight, motion to adopt budget meeting schedule.
Second.
I have a question on the schedule, is there a reason why we skip the next one?
I don't, I don't have a reason for you, the administration, the budget team, myself. We drafted a schedule and this is the one that we came up with.
Well, you want to see us, Tim?
My preference would be to have a meeting script, so we have time at the end. And so we're at the point. Could be a lot of amendments, so then you have a day where you can have a session dealing with just amendments. Could be affiliates in the work service though, too. Just okay.
Um. This, I think, if you want to make the amendment, you can make the amendment, but this has been the schedule, I mean, we put it out.
What would the date and the time be for that?
Seventeen.
No, we have to move, we'd have to move every single one a, a week.
Right. Yeah.
Do you want to make the amendment?
Sure. I'll make that as a.
Is there a second? Amendment fails for lack of a second. We have a roll call on the budget meeting schedule, please.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
McDermott. Yes. Mr. McGinn.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Yes. Schedule is passed, we now have public comment. Greg Griffin. Pass, Controller Griffith.
My public comment is on the work session agenda that's upcoming for council's consideration as we went into a work session to get information. I agree with Mr. Wolovich on that introduction of the ordinance for the Udag money, it would be really nice. I mean, it's on the agenda, I think it's backwards, that we're going to get some discussion and information from the developer now after you've already introduced the ordinance. I know you can vote the ordinance down at some point, but it would be really nice if they would have been a presentation at the last work session prior to the introduction. For everybody in the audience's certification, if nothing else, so we have an idea why you introduced an ordinance without any information, that would be helpful. Kudos to the people who had enough intestinal fortitude to vote no on that whole ordinance, I think that was the right thing to do. Uh, item number two, on the use of the internet earned funds for the American Rescue Plan funds for New World Management software upgrade. Uh, my, my office and some other folks were on the team for that whole process. New World, when we purchased it back in 2013, I was on the controller at the time, and I think some members of council, Mr. Urban was there and Mr. McGinley was there. Spending a.
I've been here for.
A long time, sure. Um, in, in, when we put that system in, I think it cost us three and a half million dollars, I think at the time, it was a lot of money. We have a lot of modules in there that we haven't put in place yet, this is one step, kudos to the manager and the administration for recognizing that we're paying for something that we're not using. This could eliminate a lot of the costs that we pay for Kronos as well as ADP by using the module that we've had for the past 12 years. So this is a step forward to try and streamline New World to make it better and save us money in the process. As well as make it easier for the staff who has to do payroll, it's a monumental task. So I, I encourage council to ask as many questions as you need to on that, but I think that's a positive step for the council to consider. And the other item that I had to talk about is the item number nine is the ETA Insurance Group for Employee Benefits. That's another cost saver for the county as we look forward to ways to save money and make our budget more streamlined and save taxpayer money. That's a way that we can get employees more educated on their benefits that they get from the county, as well as put that E suite module, which is in New World that we pay for. That has, has not been used, if we remember back in 13 when we bought New World. We were told that every employee was going to have access to everything that they needed through New World, that hasn't happened. This is a step to make that happen, so I encourage council to consider those items when you are getting information in your work session agenda, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raivo.
Yes, I'd like to echo Controller Griffith said about, you know, the council members who voted down the, for the, the developer without any information. I hope he provides you a lot more detail in his presentation than he presented us on the redevelopment authority board. Okay, because, and also just for the public certification and yours, Madam Chair and members of council. I'm sure you got, received my email for the three conditions, if you are going to consider this, three conditions have to be met. Number one, HUD gives you in writing that the county is off the hook for the $6 million owed for the Hotel Sterling. Number two, the developer provides a financial breakdown or pro forma of what he has available in terms of funds. You know, private lending, personal, and any grants that he seeks, as well as all expenditures and then the total amount of the project. And lastly, if there's any change of scope of the project or change in the spending of the money. That you guys are going to give, or considering the 3 million. Then there has to be a hold harmless indemnification to the county if there's a problem. And that the developer, we have, have to pay back those funds. Those are the three conditions that I would like to see, and I hope that the county would, would like to ask for. Uh, using the Office of Law to draft that kind of agreement for those three conditions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raivo, any other members of the public that wish to speak? Mr. Soski.
John Soski, Wilkes-Barre, well, one thing that concerns me is one of our presenters, he, he's not even interested in hearing the public comment, he just left, so. You know, that, that should tell you guys something, but like, I, I would like to know if you guys could at least get a list of the private financiers. Since they're asking for public money, so like, like basically what Mr. Raivo was saying, like that, you know, just so we know who's investing. Because like I said, they said years ago in 20, or 2018, that this was going to be privately funded, and that's obviously not the truth. And like I said, you could go look that up on YouTube, Wilkes-Barre City Council Meeting 32218, around 58 minutes, you could, you could look that up for yourself, you don't have to trust what I'm saying. But they said this will be privately funded, and you know, it's a lie, it was a lie, so I just am very, very concerned about their finances. And if they could actually do what they're saying they're going to do, so you have to really, really look into like, if this is, if they have the ability to do this project. I'd love to see them do it, I think it'd be a great thing, but you can't get fooled by all the shiny, nice pictures they're going to show you and things like that. Because they're just going to BS you guys, I've seen them do it to Wilkes-Barre City Council before. Those guys weren't, I hope you guys are a little sharper than them, I think I could sell them a North Hampton Street Bridge if I had some funny pic, some nice pictures and stuff. So please, guys, just don't get fooled by pictures, look for things in paperwork to make sure that they have what they, they could actually afford to build what they want to build, thank you.
Thank you, any other members of the public, sure. Yeah, sure, just state your name and the municipality, yep.
Uh, my name is Hsna Sylah Sam Syla. Actually, my company is H and M with my wife, she's here. I'm sorry, my English is not good enough.
No, fine.
Thank you. Uh, let's go back a little bit in the history, I came back in Walgreens Bay, 2014. From 2014, I built it with my company. Uh, around 110 apartments, beautiful apartments. The last project, which we did it in a Kingston, is around, I think, 70,000, 40. Uh, 42 or 43 large apartments, which spent over $4 million. Believe me, I didn't came from Philadelphia to do a business here and to do something bad. I, I worked very hard with my wife. And we got some old projects, let's say, a ba, a bank, which we bought it was for 10 years for sale, nobody buy. After, I start, I tried to, to do something and for the city and for the zoning. I bring it, I bring it more than 30 investors, guys. In Waltonsbury, in Kingston, in 44, Nannicock, and the city, from New York Albanian community. Too many people from Philadelphia and from everywhere, they invested in this area. Houses, which was ready for demolition. This is my dream to build this hotel. Never, ever, I know very well what is, I'm sorry, your name, what you're talking about, my friend. I am, I, I born in one family and I educate one family, which not easy. All the time my, my dad said, don't say very easy to somebody, you're liar. This is, for me, is not in our tradition. You have to have proves, very proof to say that. And again, it's my dream to finish this project. We're going to give you everything information about my company name. I am behind H and M Company.
Thank you. And then you'll, you guys will get a chance to speak during the work session. There's an, yeah, there's an agenda item for you. Sure. Any other members of the public that wish to speak? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Extension, opposed. Meeting is adjourned. We'll start at 6:50. Good. Turn your mics off.
All right, it's 6:52. Everybody's back. I'd like to call this work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
President?
Mr. Luscavage?
Here.
Mr. Malaro?
Here.
Mr. McDermott? Mr. Beginly?
Present?
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Sure.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Here?
All right, thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. All right. Number one, we have receiving discussion division reports for September 2023.
Thank you. I know we have a long evening ahead of us. We have a lot of very significant discussions and demonstrations. I just wanted to advise council and community of some things that are going on and another example of collaboration. You know that we do have water infiltration in the basement of this building and I reached out and council member Thornton Scavitch and McKinley did go down to see the area. I invite all the council members to go to see the area and from that view that they had, it was clear that we have some issues with the sewer piping in the basement, sub-basement of the building. And today we did have a plumber in and we had to open a wall in GIS mapping and there are two leaks behind that wall. I will be giving council an update. We have to take care of it. We have taken care of the artwork in this building, which is extraordinary and we have to do that, but now we have to look at the innards of the building and make sure that everything is taken care of. So you'll be getting updates on that. I wish I had better news to report, but the good news is that we did have council members who are very involved and care about what's going on in the county. You decide, reach out to me and now we're taking, that could be a significant issue if we don't take care of it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the use of interest earned on American Rescue Plan Act funds for New World Management System software upgrade.
Hi, good evening again. We're asking permission to be able to use ARPA interests in order to do training on some modules that we currently already have in Kronos. Right now, we are using Kronos, New World, and ADP in order to process our payroll. And we have one person doing all of the payroll, which is, you know, obviously not a, not a great safeguard. So what we want to do is eliminate the use of ADP and New World and do everything through Kronos. I'm sorry, the opposite. Eliminate Kronos and ADP and do everything through New World, which is our accounting system. In order to do that, we would also, with the savings, hire a payroll supervisor who would then, you know, supervise the person who's currently doing the payroll, would have the responsibility of paying all the taxes. Because obviously if we do not use ADP, then we're responsible for the W2s, the tax remittance and all of that. We anticipate a savings of approximately $150,000 a year, beginning next year in 2024, if we eliminate the two systems. And going forward, you know, we anticipate we will continue to have that savings, obviously. The $250,000 is sort of a worst case scenario. It's just their training hours. We would be paying to have new time clocks. The time clocks would be used with the badge now instead of the finger and the function that currently exists. So that would eliminate, you know, everyone's concern regarding, you know, COVID issues and things like that. And I just think it'll work better because a lot of people cannot use their finger for whatever reason, you know, based on like too hot, too cold, things like that. So it'll take care of that problem for us as well as, you know, again, make it easier. We'll be using everything with the one system and we'll have control over making sure that everything's done on time. So do you have any questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, I just want to add a statement that the good news is, this is all coming from interest earned on that ARPA money over this year and last year and earlier last year, 22, I called for people in the administration to get the money and get interest rate earned. Because we weren't earning hardly, we were earning hardly any on this account. And as the year went on, it wasn't happening. And this is prior to County Manager Cropper being here, she wanted to be here in the county. And I'm not pointing any finger, but it didn't happen for a large part of last year. I think it wasn't until December, a lot of council members on board have got behind that and, and now we've earned quite a bit of interest on that, that money. So the good news to the taxpayers is, this, this is not taxpayer money going for that. It's interest earned on that ARPA money. So that's the, thank you for taking the initiative to go forward with that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next, we have a discussion regarding the resolution approving the recommendations of Zigman and Company regarding security and bond limits to protect Luzerne County against risk of loss for calendar year 2024.
Can Ruth, the seller here? Good evening. I'm Ruth Morosky Keller. I'm the president of the Zigman Company and the contracted risk manager for the county. What we do annually is to recommend bond limits for the county in the different positions. Fortunately, during the past few years, the county has been able to purchase a what's known as a blanket bond policy and that blanket bond has, it's a very broad ensuring agreement on it, which has few exclusions for elected officials, for appointed officials. Included in it is employees. And also there's an endorsement adding the jointures that you have with Wyoming County. So it's a fairly broad policy. It doesn't exclude very many things except tax collection. So we have been able through the last couple of years, or the county has been able during the past few years to have a $5 million bond policy that includes practically everybody in the county, including the county manager. With the exception of the two employees that handle tax collection. So for the head of the Budget and Finance, we've made the recommendation of $2 million because that position, according to the job description for the county, does have some tax collection authority and description within their job description. It's not much, but it does exist. And since the policy, the bond policy, excuse me, the blanket crime policy excludes any tax collection. That's why we're making that recommendation. The office manager and tax administrator, we have made the recommendation of $5 million because that position handles all the tax collection for the county. So I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have. Some of you have seen me through the years, but others are new, so.
Real quick, I'm looking at the table on page 37. People in the county, county managers cover the $5 million, Division Head of Budget, $2 million, Office Tax Administrator, $5 million, $5 million, $1 million, and council's only $7,500. Or it says covered under the blanket bond. Well, the blanket bond's a billion, so is it a million or 7,500?
Well, if one of you caused a million dollar claim, it would be a million dollars. The recommendation for 7,500 is an old time, it goes way back. When I first started in insurance. So that was the minimum requirement for council type people.
Okay.
Yes, up to a million, up to $5 million, actually.
Okay.
That was common at that time. Would be more back with a bottom. There were any changes.
Crime policy actually handles any money or property, so. It's very broad. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, number four, discussion regarding resolution approving the sale of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions, acting as the Luzerne County Tax Plan Bureau. Is there anybody here?
I believe that you received the information for these sales. If you have any questions before the voting session begins, do a record to myself or the office floor. I know there usually needs a big list, but you have to go through them.
Any questions? All right. Number five, discussion regarding the resolution approving an agreement with Newport Township for the Luzerne County Treasurer to collect Newport Township taxes.
This is an extension of an agreement that we have with Newport Township, even collecting their taxes and it's improving that relationship.
Also, I'd like to just note that this is something they came to us. Serving that, that's how we guys agree. This is not something the counties, it's something they came to us, say, you need your help to do tax. It's been a very good partnership. I guess they wanted to do honestly.
Any other questions or comments? All right, number six, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement amendment between Luzerne and Wyoming County Area Agency on Aging and the Supervisors of Exeter Township, Wyoming County, for an active adult center located at twenty-eight thirteen Sullivan's Trail Falls, PA, one eight six one five.
Yes, I'm back up here. I'm wearing my aging hat this time to ask for the county managers to be able to sign a lease for our Falls Active Adult Center. It's located at two eight one three Sullivan's Trail. We've been in that location for over thirty years. We pay eighteen thousand dollars a year to be in that location. We serve about twenty consumers a day. I can answer any questions that anyone has regarding the lease. It's a two percent increase per year, five-year lease.
Who owns the property?
The township owns the property.
Township?
Yeah.
So we paid to them?
We do, yes. And there's no county, yeah, and there's no county funding. It's a hundred percent state funding.
What did you hear?
Yep, we like that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Number seven, discussion regarding the Miracle Order.
Yeah, Mr. Miracle and his staff here to inform council of the nature of the order.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is John Listman. I'm the Associate General Counsel of Miracle Commercial Real Estate Services. I'm here tonight with Rob Miracle and Kevin O'Boyle, who you'll also be hearing from, along with some of our other colleagues. As you know, there's going to be a request before council at the next voting session that has been submitted by the company. And so tonight, to ensure that council has been fully informed and that all your questions are answered, we wanted to put together a short presentation. It is on the screen and we've distributed to, to the members of the council. It's in the blue binder. If you just flip that over, you can follow along. So in the first slide, we just wanted to offer really an introduction about the company for those who might not be familiar with the company. Miracle was founded in nineteen eighty-five and we currently own and maintain twenty million square feet of commercial real estate, primarily in Luzerne County. We're, we're pretty proud of the fact that in Miracle developed and owned buildings, there are twenty thousand people working as we sit here today. And they actually earn over one billion dollars in wages annually. So the job creation impact and the impact that that has on not only those individuals, but on the larger community is something within which we take great pride. And actually, that's just outside of the company, but within the company, I'm proud to work alongside over four hundred of your neighbors, people who live and, and work here together at Miracle. We have in-house team members who do all sorts of functions, from designing, construction, legal, accounting, and we're proud of that vertically integrated structure, because it makes us a very good and strong team. And in addition to that, not only within the company, we also are proud to work daily with over two hundred people who work for subcontractors and also provide services to the company. So since nineteen eighty-five, over just a few decades, it's really built an amazing structure, which is proud to be a partner in the community. Just a little bit in the next few slides about sort of the trajectory of the company and what's been going on recently with our development. You'll see that just since twenty twenty, we've been averaging one point five million square feet of development a year. And that's important, because it not only increases the portfolio, but it also increases us and our ability to continue creating jobs. And to that point, the next bullet also summarizes the fact that since twenty twenty alone, we've entered into leases with sixty-five new businesses covering over eight million square feet. And an important part you'll hear a little bit about later, twenty-two of those businesses are manufacturing-related and life sciences companies. We'll cover that on a later slide, but you'll hear that those are very unique opportunities and create really good jobs that are high-paying and allow for career growth for our neighbors right here in Luzerne County. And finally, about our development, some of my colleagues are actually skilled tradespeople who are able, from within the Miracle Company, to put together and assemble manufacturing facilities. So that makes us a builder who's not just building distribution centers, but also very advanced manufacturing facilities. And that's something of which we're very proud. The last few bullets here I'll run through quickly, because I think they speak for themselves. Miracle's also proud to be the largest taxpayer in Luzerne County. And you'll see just some of the sheer numbers here. Since Miracle's time in business, our development and our continually-owned buildings generated over one hundred and three million dollars in just real estate taxes alone to the county and its municipalities and school districts. Of that larger one hundred and three million dollar number, you see that twenty-six million, about a quarter, came directly to the county. But we're not only about the tax revenue. We also want to be, as you see at the top, not only a developer, but a community partner. And to that end, we are very proud of the fact, most proud of the donations and in-kind support we've offered, which we've totaled at twenty-seven point three million dollars to over three charities right here in Luzerne County, which has allowed the company to make a great and important impact. The last bullet we'll cover in a moment, but that's just a quick summary on an initiative you may have heard of recently, known as Discover NEPA, which seeks to promote the beauty of this area and all the things that we have to do and why it's a good place to live. And in that initiative alone, we've invested over ten million dollars. So if you go to the next slide, this is a summary to get into a little more detail on not only the tax revenue that's been paid, but the tax revenue that you, as the governing body of this county, can expect from just Miracle developed and owned properties. So you'll see, we, we looked at just this year alone, twenty twenty-three, the county's realizing about three point four million dollars in tax revenue. And when you add that number along with the taxes we're paying also to municipalities and school districts, you see that number gets closer to twelve point nine million dollars in total. But we took the opportunity now to also do some projections to just give you an idea of what Miracle Development will continue to produce for the county, for its school districts and for its municipalities. And you'll see that by our projections, the county is going to increase its annual receipts over the next decade from about three and a half million to over six million dollars annually. And that, giving it the run of the next decade, will be over forty-five million dollars. And I remind you, just in, in real estate taxes alone, not in the other taxes that are obviously realized from this sort of job growth and the benefits it creates. When you start summing that up with the county municipal and school, those totals reach a very large number of one hundred and seventy-seven point two million dollars coming to the county, other municipalities and school districts to which we pay taxes. And that number will be over twenty-four point three million dollars annually in the next ten-year run. So we're proud of the fact that not only do we contribute to the community on a charitable basis, but we've created a basis of real estate taxes that hopefully makes your job and your planning a little easier and gives you some reliable data and numbers.
Yeah. Well, I do want to add, we've also looked beyond that tenure period, just to think about long-term planning that the council needs to do and thinks about maintaining fiscal responsibility. That if you look at the years, ten years after that period, within just the existing projects that we have that are taxpaying today, there'll be another two hundred and seventy-two million dollars in taxes, just real estate taxes, in the next ten-year period. And thereafter, for the ten years after that, there'll be three, thirty-five million dollars. So in total, just the properties that we own right now and, and pay taxes on, the properties that we've owned and developed, through that thirty-year period, think of a thirty-year mortgage, you know, for example, residential home, we'll have eight hundred and eighty-nine million dollars in real estate taxes in the properties that we own and have developed in, in, just in Luzerne County. And as, as John spoke about the, the, one differentiator, talked about the manufacturing. We think that we somewhat stand unique in, in our resources, having local people, being able to, to complete the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, sprinkler, and the concrete work for manufacturers. John mentioned that, you know, just in the, in the last, since two thousand twenty, one-third of the deals we've done have been manufacturing. We're finding life science and reshoring. There's somewhat a major change going on in, in the sense of post-COVID, where we're finding significant investments for companies coming in and putting hundreds of millions of dollars in, in buildings. We've cataloged about five hundred million dollars in investment of our tenants in tenant improvements in, in spaces, in, in buildings that we've already constructed. So we, we think that the benefit of not having just a, a construction management model, but we have architects, engineers, servers, attorneys, electricians, certified welders. We crush our own stone. We make our own topsoil. That integration of resources allowed us to be able to provide a level of service. Some of the tenants that we, Logoplast is an example, and the head of industrial park, we've been there for three years, still doing work inside the building, finishing detail for those spaces. HMTX has just built a road-class manufacturing facility for wood flooring, but thirty million dollars plus in their facility. CVS has put in a hundred million dollars in their facility in Hanover. Jeriki has put in eighty to a hundred million dollars when they're finished, over a hundred million dollars. Rent has put in thirty million dollars of automation inside their building. Neiman Marcus just put in twenty-five million dollars. We're finding these companies putting huge investments and therefore not just the jobs that we've been able to help create, but those indirect jobs, the, the opportunity of those hundreds of millions of dollars that are circulating in Luzerne County, being able to buy services and, and resources for trade contractors and, and equipment and machinery. Think that it really separates the, the uniqueness of our model in being able to have that manufacturing base that provides better quality jobs. It actually, when you think about the, the transition of unemployment in Luzerne County, and you think about the retail and service sectors, these, these, these jobs have an opportunity to bring people in that are underemployed, to let them have a transition and have upside without the, the traditional cap that you have, a glass ceiling, that might be found in, in normal service or, or retail jobs. So again, that manufacturing piece to us is extremely important. We're seeing over and over, as an example, just in our buildings in recent past, the opportunity of conversions. It's almost yesterday's warehouse is becoming tomorrow's manufacturing building. We have buildings, Blue Falls, which is in the Hanover Park, has now become Logoplast. Sears, that had a bankruptcy, we, and we lost two, two tenancies. One was five hundred and sixty thousand square feet in, in Hanover, and the other was two hundred and fifty-two thousand. The two hundred and fifty-two thousand square foot building became Rent with twenty-five million dollars of, of manufacturing operation. And we added another four, forty thousand square foot addition on the existing Pepsi building to make it a million-square-foot facility. It's the East Coast distribution headquarters for Gatorade and Propel. But it also allowed for the opportunity for the building, the manufacturing facility in the Crestwood Industrial Park, to push out warehousing and expand manufacturing in that building. So again, you think about the, the transition for Telerex. We have a new manufacturer moving in. Neiman Marcus moved out, a new manufacturer called Olympia is moving in. Travelocity is, is in the transition to go into a manufacturing mode. Whiteman Tower transitioned into American Paper Bag. The UGI, Leslie Fay, has turned into One-on-One Ink, which is in the farming operations, going to recycle milk in the marketplace and distribute to, to farmers. And then JC Drive, where we had a facility, we, we had a warehousing operation where Henkel is, is the manufacturer of Dial. And one of the major manufacturers in, in the, is the marketplace with, 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 in the Valmont Industrial Park. We brought, bought a building, converted it, brought rail in, ended up having a high, high power. It was, it wasn't traditional structure. We bypassed some of the PPL transformers and put in primary power. And then we put a conveyor system from that building, six hundred feet over a stream, to connect the automation of the injection molding of the pumps that you, you would pump up a dial, a dial soap. And it basically runs through over a stream into the building next door. That kind of, of, of integration, engineering is, is what's driving better quality jobs, and we think we're at the center of that. Frankly, you can take all the, all the developers in the entire region and combine them, and we're many, many multiples of those, being able to bring new manufacturing jobs to Northeastern Pennsylvania, and that, that we're very, very proud of.
So we'll just go to the next slide, just briefly. Not only are we proud of the kind of jobs we've brought into the area, but we're working to promote the area too. So a few years ago, the company put a significant investment into a program you may have heard of called Discover NEPA. If someone's looking for something to do for a weekend or says there's nothing to do, this is a good resource to check. This is something to promote the many amenities that we have, quality-of-life amenities throughout the area, and to promote really what a lot of us in this room already know, why it's a really good place to live in hopes of not only attracting people to stay, but keeping our best and brightest here in the area. At this point, I'll invite Kevin O'Boyle up to discuss a little collaboration between Discover NEPA and the county.
Thanks, John. I'm going to give a shout-out to Miri Kohlzar, our executive director of Discover NEPA. She and her team, they partnered with the county. If you were on Luzerne County's website today in the Living In section, you'd actually get to a microsite that lists all the amenities from Discover NEPA, filter down just one that is Luzerne County-specific. Discover NEPA is a ten-county initiative, but that page highlights just Luzerne County amenities across Living In, Arts and Culture, Sports and Entertainment. So we are in thirteen business parks in Luzerne County. Center Point is perhaps maybe the park that is the largest, that we're the most well-known for in Pittston and Jenkins Township, but we also have developments in Crestwood and Wright Township, in Forty-Four, in Plains Township, in, in Hanover Township, Hazel Township. And the new parks under development are Center Point South, River Road in Jenkins Township, as you come across, Street, A Street Bridge, you may have seen our crews that work over there. And obviously, we're here today to talk about Prostruts. You tell me, Rob's excitement. He's done a lot of deals over the years. There are companies, large and small, a lot of brands you, you may recognize here. Among our tenants and clients are forty Fortune one thousand firms. One way, we're different from some of the competing developers that mainly focus on very, very large buildings. We build a diversity of buildings, large and small, and that caters to a wide variety of clients. So we don't just, for big companies, there's also smaller, local, family-owned businesses within our tenant mix also. We talked about jobs, and twenty thousand people was mentioned in the intro. We started going on Indeed and PA Career Link to track the titles of the jobs being posted by our tenants. And we've been tracking that over time, so we can understand the diversity of jobs that are being brought to the region. So, you know, because of the diversity of the buildings, you're going to track companies that employ all kinds of folks from entry-level laborers, managers, executives, IT pros, engineers, pharmacists, and many, many more. We've been very, very busy since the start of, of twenty twenty. Like we said before, sixty-five deals, twenty-two of those manufacturing or life sciences-related. I'll highlight some of them here, that there's big deals and small deals. You'll see the diversity. PepsiCo, US Hydrations, locally-owned business, Water Bottle, you could be familiar with. Jeriki Beverages, one of the largest juice bottlers east of the Mississippi. They do the, the Simply Orange brands. Is a recent tenant, HMTX, large flooring manufacturer. We talked about Rent Kitchens, the kitchen cabinet distributor. Olympia Chimney, Two.com, that facility employs a hundred pharmacists in, in Pittston Township. And again, also a multitude of small deals as well. American Paper Bag, Rob mentioned, Logoplasty. Microstar Logistics is a fun one. We won't get into that right now, I'm sorry. But no, it's, it's a, it's a pooled keg model, and it's not just typical warehouse. There, there's some value adds there, the, the, they're cleaning and repairing the equipment. Because it's, it's a more efficient distribution model for, for kegs. Yes.
Yes.
Chewy.com. I think everybody recognizes Chewy.com.
Yes. Yes. So North Point brought Chewy to the marketplace, had a prior relationship with them, and constructed a warehouse facility in the Hanover Industrial Park. We believe North Point's a good developer and a good competitor, and I think they've helped the market. It's rising tides in our perspective, a company that's been able to bring new jobs to the region. But they're primarily building large warehouse buildings. They also secured Chewy in a facility in Scranton and built the second warehouse facility. And then Chewy looked for an operation for their first pharmaceutical opportunity in the nation, that somebody that could actually do the infrastructure and the electrification and the mechanicals, that get Department of Health approvals. And we've done 22 deals with Geisinger and with Commonwealth Health and Surgery Centers, and we've had some unique experience and be able to have. I think that's one of the benefits I mentioned earlier about the manufacturing expertise that we have and the mechanical plumbing. They work with us, and again, in that first phase, there's more than 250 employees, 100 new pharmacists. And we're now just kicking off the second phase, there'll be a whole new compounding and manufacturing facility. So while it's actually a play back and forth, North Point was very successful, they had a relationship, they brought them in the marketplace. They looked for somebody that could do more sophisticated work, that could be there constantly to do value-added, and selected us to do the facility for their pharmaceutical. And we find that to be true in a lot of areas right now. We have and are growing a reputation in the entire Chicago region. The four major brokerage firms are viewing that we are an excellent match for their manufacturer, they're looking to move east. So we're finding new opportunities, and again, I think with advanced manufacturing, robotics, cobots, you're seeing significant investments. The market has finally changed where they feel there's an investment profile, that there is going to be, I think, some reduced employment, but higher wages on some of these buildings. And I think that in the facility that we're planning in Hazleton, I think is a unique opportunity. We've gotten better in this latter half of the work we've done at Center Point. And we think that the Hazleton opportunity for us, with brand-new buildings, with institutional-grade structure, with good utilities, are going to let us drive a high level of tenant improvement investment, and therefore, high-quality jobs for the region. And with, again, indirect induced jobs and opportunity to have significant translation of hundreds of millions of dollars of additional tenant improvement. So I think that, again, it's somewhat rising tides. As other developers, we've helped create the market for 20 years where no one really was in Northeastern Pennsylvania as a private speculative developer, there's now a dozen developers in the region. And I think it's good news for the marketplace to actually have those additional companies to invest. We've fought for 38 years, I have, trying to convince people that Northeastern Pennsylvania is a good place to live, work, and play. And we've had, today, we still have the third-ranked market. Lehigh Valley is still a higher-ranked market, and Central Pennsylvania with Harrisburg, York and Carlisle, and Allen, East and Becklin. They're closer to Philadelphia, they have easier access to New Jersey markets and the 25 million people in the New York metropolis. So we still are considered the tertiary market on Eastern Pennsylvania, and we've been fighting hard. I think we helped prove the market, others have followed us. I think it's a good thing for the region as a whole, and would hope that you continue to think about that as an investment. My belief is that when you think about jobs and taxes, that not only the taxes, for example, to think that we have almost $900 million in taxes from the properties we have that will translate right just to real estate taxes, they're really a small part, honestly, of the translatable taxes that you think of, the wages that are $1 billion a year, that relate to the federal taxes, the state taxes, and even the local taxes for the LST and the earned income tax, for the EIT. The benefit of having those additional dollars circulate through the marketplace, it's really an opportunity for the region, I believe, to take a new step. And with this new translation for advanced manufacturing, we think this new investment will be the largest industrial investment in the history of Luzerne County. And would look to continue to hope to have a partnership with the county and bring and drive new jobs to the region. Just going to briefly highlight some past projects. This is Center Point, before and after, in the top, you can see some of the challenging topography of the mine scarred land that the old Comiskey coal lands were prior to development. And in the center there, you see the Geisinger building, if you're driving north on 81, it's very prominent and sticks out as you drive north. Just a quick area to show, this is what Center Point looked like prior to development in 2005. It was all mine scarred land. And here it is today with 51 buildings, 12 million square feet, and 7,500 jobs in those buildings in Center Point. Looking at Hanover Industrial Straits, industrial estates in Hanover Crossing and Hanover Township, 1901. To present day, everything that you see right there was a miracle-developed property. I can't see my stats, but Sharon's in my way, sorry Sharon. Here we are in Humboldt, 1994.
So in Hanover, again, we have 3.73 million square feet, 40,000 tenants, about 25,000 jobs in our buildings. We worked with Rick Chamber. He was a member of Geisinger and helped facilitate the development of this selling land to a private developer. This was the first location that actually we constructed spec buildings in Hanover. We've also done the same in Crestwood, where we have vision foods and we had for a wheel horse.
Here we are in Humboldt in Hazel Township. And forward to today.
Hazel Township, we've been the largest taxpayer for 20 years in that marketplace. In Hazel Township, we've got 1,620 square feet, 16 buildings, 20 tents, and about 4,250 jobs. And that is directly adjacent to the lands that.
Just to highlight some of the clients in Hazel Township and the adjacent development, we'll be developing next in Crossroads East. Some pictures of the landscape for Crossroads East, it's similar conditions that we've encountered in the past, nothing that we're not built for. We have an in-house excavation team, 73 in-house professionals. It's one of the strengths of our organization, they specialize in these irregular, rocky, challenging landscapes. There's strip pits, large palm banks, and very challenging topography in Crossroads East, but nothing that we're afraid of.
This is the roughest land really in that marketplace. There's 70-foot strip pits, as you said, there's significant degradation on this, demolishes old structures. Again, this is the intersection of 924 and 81.
So this is the project here to talk about today, there is 1,740 acres in total. Its borders, 81, State Route 424 and State Route 924. In total, the plan is to build 36 buildings, it's totaling 14.64 million square feet on those acres.
So you can see in the lower left, it's Humboldt, and it's been a very successful park created by Kandu. It's developed for 70 years now. We believe, if you think of the success we've had at Center Point, the acceleration we've had with that park, we believe that right now, we'll have three intersections, the intersection of 924 and 81. And then on 424, on both sides of 424, from 81 to 309, these lands were the original Tegnati lands, the Beltrami lands. So really, they're coal, blast chat, so they're all coal operators that really had mine scarred. This is not farm lanes, this is something that is significant acid mine issues. In fact, at Center Point, we received a certificate only in collaboration with BAMR, a national award for the US Department of Interior, for filling in eight mine openings and having all the surface drainage effectively controlled, so it didn't win, pick up the acid mine and include the Sasquatch. Here, we have similar challenges with some of the topography as well as the mine scarred land. We also think that this is an opportunity for us, and we've committed to the leaders of Hazel Township and ultimately the beneficiaries of Hazleton, that when you drive along this stretch, you still see, you know, mine scarring and coal. What we've done at Center Point with the Comiskey lands, we have a very small section of 81, and I think we've done, you know, a good job in trying to change the landscape and the agglutinating issues and putting the rock in and the grass and planted that, almost 10,000 trees. The benefit of us thinking of this scarred land, we think that from Maryland to New York border, 10 to 15 years from today, this section of the 81 border will be 81 border, or will be the most attractive border for Maryland to New York. And that's our promise to be able to take that landscape and have it be a new gateway. And it will also be because of that 924 section into the city of Hazleton. While none of these lands are in the city of Hazleton, it's going to be a new front door for Hazleton, hopefully provide a level of improved image for the entire region. And if they give up things like park litter and water and rocks, and again, others, the land, they bury the big rocks. We use them to create walls, we think that creates a nice feature. And our in-house resources are capable of doing that and doing other lend-to-hand projects where we're keeping our people busy year-round and don't have a layoff structure, even in the harsh winters. So again, this is an opportunity for us to replicate what we think has been successful for Center Point. And we're hoping, just at Center Point, we believe you could see from the numbers as it relates to really fiscally, fiscal responsibility and thinking about trying to accelerate. The benefit of your partnership with us allows us to accelerate that development and benefit of having all those, not only the taxes for the real estate taxes that will ignore over the course of generations, but you have all those indirect dollars and jobs that are coming to the marketplace immediately with that accelerated growth. And appreciate this business is really a difficult, as North Point is an example, they're an excellent developer. They've done a great job in the marketplace. I think there is a format where being able to compete in that business and have a format that for the most part, the national brokers are really controlling the best out-of-town and international companies. And when they do analysis of whether you're going to make it to the second round of an RFP, the opportunity of having those incentives and being able to be a successful second-round contributor is a me-too program for, in this case, the Lardo or the tax abessor. You can see that it's worked very well from past times. Frankly, by the time in Hazleton, all the other developers start to put in $1 back in, if any meaningful dollars, we'll have a quarter of a billion dollars of taxes paid back to the county. Well, because we've had that much of it started, and recreated the market, being able to create that runway for the next level of developers.
The development of Crossroads will start near 424 and work its way north over time. We expect the park to grow to 5,000 employees over time.
This is an opportunity, residential, we had, as we've grown and as our company has expanded, we've acquired lands in almost every location where we've developed industrial and office and medical. We've acquired land that can only be used really for residential use, it's not been our focus. And we recognize, just as we started, just put the first location in place for Center Point, where we call it Center Point, there'll be a little bit of retail, and we just signed a pretty significant lease arrangement with the accounting firm. We're looking at residential, for example, we own residences, you can see in Jenkins Township area, Pittston Township area, Hazel Township, Wright Township, Plains Township. This location shows a piece of land that was owned by Pasco Shivo. And the community actually looked at, was mining. And I think there was an interest of not having as much activity in that sector. We agreed that we would acquire and develop residential in a large section. You'll see there's about 100 plus acres that we acquired, there's probably 90 acres where we're going to develop a residential, the intersection of 309 and the Beltway. And the other locations that we've identified, we're going to also think of putting in housing, townhouses and single-family homes that will help the region. And I also think, as there's elevation in the region, I know that there's a national home builders that have come in and made commitments, have secured land parcels and put money down. That really is going to be a nice benefit to the region. It's the first time that national developers have looked at the market and felt it is justified. It's a little bit today because of the increasing interest rates and escalation of material costs, but they may be investment, and you'll see, you think of for example, Lehigh Valley, they're really significantly ahead of us at residential development. It is an opportunity for this region with the new industrial and the growth that's occurred with us, as well as the other developers. You're seeing the opportunity of the appetite, that residential will also take hold in the marketplace. Think of Tuscan in Sand Springs that came from Lehigh Valley and transitioned here. There's some national, some of the top five developers in the country are committing to different areas. And all throughout Northeastern, yeah, Hazelton, in the mountain top area, in the straight marketplace. So you're going to see a change over the course of time, there's additional housing that will track some of the other development activity that you see in the market.
Just to close it up, Rob and the team, we've always been partners with the community going back. The strength of our excavation team has been one area that we've been able to lean in and to help the community. And we want to talk about the September, I mean, just effectively, lend-a-hand has been something that we've done. I started my career in cabbage patch stalls and provided resources to residents during the Christmas season. We donated toys when I was 20 years old in college, and I was ready to lend a hand at that point. From that moment forward, we've done lend-a-hand projects in the communities that we have been engaged in, and even beyond. It was a whole, my proudest moment, days in business forever was September 11th and 12th, 2011, when we were helpful with the county engineering group. And we took the resources over to 44, and then to the cemetery, and then to the field, and were able to be able, moved 8,000 tons in 24 hours, in being able to help stabilize the dike. And it's been three weeks moving 30 million gallons of water and helping in some of the different communities with Doryea and West Pittston, the pork rancher, being able to help mediate some of the damage that I watched occur when I was nine and went through the seven dragons flood and thought that it would be an opportunity for us in every situation to help. Right now, today, we have the large pumps that really the region doesn't have, the county doesn't have, that we can still maintain consistently and are ready to be available for assistance anytime there's a need for that. We have the rock blasted, I have intent that I hope that we'd be the 911 call for an issue for flooding format. We're ready for it, we're capable, and we'd love to be a helpful participant in the future. We've done a lot of individual lend-a-hand jobs, we renovated stores and fields for communities. We just finished one in Pittston Township, we just finished one in Jackson Township, we have an issue, we have a history school district. We just invested $1.8 million in the Hazelton YWCA with the hope of being the accelerator to do that, provide full space back to Hazleton Marketplace, opportunities for daycare, before-after school care, some immersive learning. We've been active with 350 organizations and feel that it's a critical piece and stewardship for my family as well as the next-generation leadership, as you've seen John Listman and Kevin be able to allow us to continue, and I love this county, I'm going to live here for the rest of my life. And the idea of the circulation of dollars that go back in and reinvest in the marketplace, I think that we have a little bit of a different model than some of the other developers in the structure that we had. And we hope to continue to partner with you in the future to be able to accelerate job creation and growth and taxes that we think is critical for, probably from county council's perspective, that I believe that this project could be the largest project stabilizing a budget going forward for the county. We'll accelerate it with your support and the opportunity to get all those additional jobs immediately, as well as all the other taxes, and then eventually, all the other taxes will translate from the real estate taxes. But alone, next year, I'm thinking about 3.4 million, I think it's 250,000 or more. We have 27 buildings that are coming off Lardo relative to Center Point, will transition from the $3.4 million to $6.1 million a year in Lardo, just to count. So again, thank you for your prior support and participation.
Mr. Orkin? Rob, thank you, and I want to get a little bit more personal, but I'm glad you mentioned some of the housing too, because that was one of my concerns, was the council, you know, with all the warehousing space that going up, you know, employees need to work at these facilities, but there's Employees need to work at these facilities, but there's not enough places to live. So, you know, thank you for addressing that concern. But um on a more personal note, I know you started many years ago, correct? And then uh how instrumental has the county been for your business over the many years as far as being a good partner to assist, you know, uh you in development, you know?
They've been excellent.
Right.
They've been, they vote both the state and I I know as an example, um so Scott Duncanberger, who was head of D C B was the, was the line person in charge for thirty five years, says that of of his thirty five years career in in state that that Center Point was his largest success in thirty five years. In D C D, the highest return for the state of investment, their investment in and return dollars to to the state.
And the reason I ask that is because obviously we have another developer following you uh tonight, you know, decided to commit to living here and developing here, lots smaller scale, but the county, you know, helping you in the past and, you know, and and I know there's some naysayers out in the audience, you know, but people come here that want to invest in this community that have a a majet objective to help this community grow. Uh, I think, you know, the county is instrumental in assisting individuals, you know, in in committing some dollars or at least Lardas or even some dollars in investing. Uh, you know, in investors like yourself and others, I think, you know, it's very important that I think my colleagues understand that. You know, throughout the years, you, you know, you weren't as large as you were twenty years ago, and my dad was a commissioner, right? But throughout the years, you've grown and and I see all the development work and I see how fast your buildings go up too. Going down River Street almost every day, you know, it was pretty desolate of six months ago. And and it has grown, you know, there's a new traffic light on River Street and everything. But uh, you know, I want to thank you for that, you know, and the information. Like I said, I I just wanted to touch base more on the personal touch that you've invested in this community. You've lived in this community pretty much all your life, correct?
Correct.
Right, right. And and I think, you know, that's what we want to see from other developers that that are here, that they are invested in this community, living here, working here, pretty much want to spend the rest of their life here. And and, you know, I don't want to be discriminatory as a council member, you know, giving one person a deal and not giving another person a potential deal, you know, however we we write it is is up to the manager, up to council, but I think, you know, there are a lot of collaborative efforts that trying to forge ahead to make Luzerne County better. And I think, you know, all of us, I think, need to work a little bit more harder and together uh to to help us grow. And I thank you, you know, for your presentation tonight. You supplied a lot of information. Appreciate it.
Mister Mascavage.
I just want to say thank you to your company, because myself and Brian Thorpe, we're involved in the two thousand eleven flood around West Piston Council. And a good partner comes out of time of need. I remember what you guys did and helped, right? It was astronomical and the resources we did have helped. And you remember things like that. So it's very important. Anybody could be there in the good times, but when the bad times hit, you were there. I applaud you for that. And I'm also very thankful because I see your your operations. I'm kind of floored because when you drive by them, you got to be awfully proud. Beautiful. You've done a great job. You should stand proud of everything you did. Thank you very much.
Mister Thorpe.
Yeah, um, thank you all for your, for your uh great presentation, very informative. And I, again, I want to applaud you for your lend a head projects over the years. Uh, you've got above and beyond admirable and give it back to the community. I think, Mister Miracle, you pretty much all of your development has been Luzerne County located. You're not all over the state or the world.
We have some in Lackawanna County.
Right.
We were dominantly in Luzerne County and actually the future growth, uh we have additional lands uh i- in the Luzerne County region.
And that's great, because you have the state, you have skin in the game.
That's right.
That shows. So uh, I did want to just touch, I wrote some points down that you guys mentioned because we've heard uh over the past few years, different developers come here, they're great, they do a great job with the county development. But some of the issues that are raised by some of our residents that are in the room there and some not in the room. Some people concerned about affordable housing that comes with all this additional growth. I'm very happy to hear that. And those slides, you provide pictures of the nice developments in residential housing that you provided, uh townhouses, single family homes. Uh, that's something we don't normally hear with a developer of the scale that you proposed. The uh other issues that I heard tonight, the high paying technical jobs and skilled labor. Some people may claim that, but you have actually shown it. We have that list of over seven hundred jobs in there, which is very hard to read, it's very small, very technical skilled jobs, not just warehouse pictures, warehouse workers. So with skilled jobs and skilled labor comes higher wages. And one criticism I've heard here from the public is, well gee, you're going to bring all these skilled people in from outside the county, increase the population here, nowhere for them to live. In fact, I think, and you could agree with me here or not, I think many of the skilled labors come from the unskilled folks in the county who want to raise their standard of living and actually go from a fifteen hour dollar job to a twenty three dollar an hour job. And they just move to a different uh manufacturing facility within what you're developing. Is that true?
It it's almost um almost the overwhelming ninety plus percent, we look at the twenty thousand jobs that we have in our buildings. It's almost all underemployment. They're transitioning from service and retail. They're looking for increased skills. It it's people that are transitioning and and elevating. It's not their first job, it's a transitional job as they're moving into uh these companies that have training and that have the automation. And today, again, even pretty unique because of machine learning and A I and uh those companies that have already made the investment, hard for them to unwind. Those companies that have a new, a new shell to start with are are the ones putting in bigger dollars, going to find even greater uh wage opportunities because there's going to be more technical requirements. And a lot of them, we're required to do that, both at trade schools, L C Cs, but also the 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 um companies themselves. So really, it's, they're they're not bringing outside labor. They're just, they're they're re employing and elevating the 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 people in Northeastern Pennsylvania. You can see that, that that list that we had of those companies, you walk through each of those names and 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 talk to those managers and we have daily interaction with them. They're not bringing people from out of the region. Uh, you know, C V S came in and the 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 Whoops Pharmacy Program was started to be able to supplement and 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 fund and feed into the C V S program. And we had advanced P C S and Walsh Distribution with with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So i- it it's really an opportunity to pull people within the region and elevate elevate the regional, regional workforce.
That's terrific. And the last two points I'll make, um, I believe most, if not all, of the land you're talking about tonight to develop uh is mine scarred land, asset mines, things like that, landfill, former landfill landers?
No landfill.
No landfill on this one?
We don't, we don't have landfill on ours, but it's all mine scarred, it's all gray fields land. It's all the former mining, mining kings of the of of the past.
Right. And and for my past, I know that mine scarred land and column and acid land, very unstable their soils, very non-marketable land. Land that would probably sit here another fifty or a hundred years undeveloped. Got gathering or collecting very little taxes for the county and the school district. Uh, so I I I applaud all the developers you included for taking that one. And buying it, it is risky and take that risk and then take the land out basically to county's hands that nobody else really wants. Uh, and I want to add, this this land is very environmentally challenged. It's environmentally scorched land. So you take it, you turn it into what I see for Route eighty one going through Princeton, beautiful landscape uh finished products. Uh, and and the one you mentioned, that you you wouldn't perform here. Environmentalists should be thrilled with this kind of effort because really the land that is there now is terrible, terrible land. Won't be developed by anybody. The last point I want to make, uh it seems like a no brainer, the enormous taxes that not only you have paid over the years to the county, to the school districts here, which is enormous. I I can't think of the task the county administration or county manager or division heads who are sitting here in the audience tonight. What ta, how how difficult their task would be coming up with budgets without these enormous taxes coming into the coffers here in the county? So um I went one step further, I know a little math during your presentation. You stated twenty thousand jobs worked in your buildings, uh about one billion, one billion, that's a thousand million in income salaries are realized every year. One billion every year by these employees. Well, I know most towns in a county charge a one percent local income tax. Some cities charge three percent. But even that one percent, one percent of one billion is ten million dollars. Ten million dollars every year for these employees is as income tax are going into our local towns like West Piston or Kingston or Hanover. So that's a tremendous boost to our local towns, just the employees themselves pay their own income tax. So it's not just the real estate tax that that you stated. I, that's what I heard tonight. And I just wanted to clarify especially the housing issue, which I applaud you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had one, but Mister Thornton took it, so. Well done. I just want to echo what they all said. Thank you very much to all of you for attending tonight. Miracle has truly been one of the best, if not the best partner, community partner in the history of Luzerne County. Um, the things that you guys have done for us, um, you know, we we really can't repay you. Uh, particularly as far as flood is concerned and things like that. Um, one of the things I always like to do is to kind of check myself on things I talked about when I was campaigning for this office and see where where we're at with all that. And I always talked about uh, you know, new businesses wanting to come in here and not just get into a warehouse where they have a tax break for ten years and then leave. But from what I understand, many of the businesses that come to your warehouses, they don't leave. Um, and that's something that I wasn't aware of until um I learned about that. I also wasn't aware of Discover N E P A. I always tell my friends that Luzerne County is an amazing place to live. And this is the first place I pointed them is go to discover n e p a dot com and uh and and check out all the fun things we have to do here. So yeah, I really personally appreciate that and uh thank you very much for your presentation again. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right, number eight. Discussion regarding the resolution approving payment of U D A G funds from community development related to the development of the Hotel Sterling site.
Well, that goes to what Councilwoman Urban said. If the funds are available, the administration will uh look out uh agreement with the development. Of course, we bring that to council.
Is council okay if they make the presentation now while we're discussing uh, while we're discussing it? Would that be okay? Okay, instead of having them wait till number ten? Go ahead, Mister.
I just have one question for council. Do you guys ever take a seventh inning stretch? Any case. Well, any case, uh my, my name is, my name is Steve Baroque. And uh, I'm a uh partner with uh Sam Sila, the Nexi Sila. Now first, let me just give you a little background in terms of uh the project itself, the conception of it. The the gateway, the Gateway Center Project was was named such because it is the gateway into the Wicksbury on the corner of uh North River and uh West Market Streets. There's two acres in that site. And it's, it's prime. It's, it's, it's also uh a good memory for a lot of people when they remember the Sterling Hotel on that site. As as many of you know, since the nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties, there's been multiple attempts to do something with that corner. Uh, first, you know, we had the structure, you know, some people tried to do something with it, didn't work. They pillaged it, took everything valuable out of it. Uh, then City Vest gotten, got involved. Uh, well, that didn't work, uh obviously. And then ultimately the county got it and the city got it and the city demolished the site. So it was a uh, it doesn't have the greatest history, but it's probably one of the most prominent locations we can ever consider for a hotel. It was well, the Sterling was well placed there in the beginning. The uh, in two, in twenty eighteen, uh the end of twenty eighteen, the city decided they were going to do something about that site and they they asked for proposals to develop it. Well, they received two proposals. Ours and another, and they selected ours. So in the end of twenty eighteen, uh we were, we got the award and we closed in the spring of twenty nineteen. Over the course of that first year, we uh, we got proposals. We did, as you see this, you see the picture on the corner of the hotel on that site. And that was uh, that was the original concept. And uh that that cost, the cost for that was twenty three million dollars back in twenty nineteen. Since that time, uh we, we were introduced to uh, to all the all the problems associated with COVID besides the illness from an economic standpoint. And uh, everything was pretty much put on hold for two years. And uh, we came back again to reactivate the effort and found out that uh with our new cost estimates, we're in the neighborhood of thirty six plus million dollars to do the project that we were contemplating, actually a smaller version of the concept we originally presented. So the numbers are terrible. And then we also uh encountered the problems with uh with financing. The interest rate when we started this whole effort was about three and a half percent. It's now closer to eight percent. Uh, which is another problem. Inflation, another problem. So there's been a series of issues, but we've persisted through the whole process with the attempt to to get this thing completed because it's important, it's important to the city, it's important to the county and the community. We uh, we secured a uh of of franchise uh from Hyatt for a hundred and twelve room High Place Hotel. Now, one thing I I need to explain here too is the hotel is one thing, but what we did is we added a conference center uh onto the building, which is something that is is may, you know, may not be necessarily the best economic idea for the hotel, but it's a great idea for the community in the downtown in terms of having a facility that can actually accommodate small conferences and uh and other events, attracting a lot of people into the downtown. So the the ballroom itself, it will be about ten thousand square feet, which is a good size. We can handle over four hundred people. And uh we also included in the uh the new concept, a uh a retail component of about thirty one hundred square feet. So we have a hundred and twelve room hotel, ten thousand square feet of conference space and thirty one hundred square feet of retail space. The uh, the other part of the project, which people seem to confuse a little bit, and some of the speakers earlier have been confused on this, is the uh the parking garage. The the parking garage is is not H and M Investments. The parking garage is the Wicksbury Industrial Development Authority. And and the, and they are going to be responsible for the uh the ownership and and well, we're going to help manage the property, but it's going to be available to the public. The lower level of the parking garage will be the uh the ground level and that will be exclusively the hotels, which amounts to about seventy five spaces. And the parking garage will have uh another hundred and fifty spaces on two floors with the ability to expand with the need for more parking spaces comes about. The team of people that we've assembled and it's, I think it's fairly impressive, was architects. Uh, we have Hemler Kamad, who's a pretty, a very reputable architectural firm. Uh, we've uh, we're using George Albert as our civil engineer on the project. Quandell Construction Company is our contractor. And Extreme Hotel Management will be the facility manager. All of us have been working together over the last several years and trying to figure out some way of skin in this cap. And uh, we're close, but but we're not there yet. And without your help, we may not get there. In in closing, in terms of my narrative part, before I go into some of the attachments. The city's downtown has so much to offer. When you think of comparable third class cities around the country and let's just say the state. How many of them have two college campuses located there, a performing arts center? You know, you have museums, libraries, all sorts of activities that that draw people to the town. The the county, to your credit, has started this uh Riverfront Concert Series, which has been a huge success in a lot of quarters. Uh, I see only more things happening on the riverfront because it's a, it's just a wonderful, potentially dynamic location. And wouldn't it be nice if, when these people come to visit this community, that we can actually can actually put them up, uh they want to stay for an extra day? And uh, and in, and when you think about it, you know, the the average occupancy is about eighty percent. Well, that's, it's about like seventy, between seventy five and eighty percent in Luzerne County right now for hotels. All right, we, we get seventy five people, our seventy five rooms rented. Uh, maybe, you know, half of them are double occupancy, you're probably looking at maybe about a hundred Uh, maybe, you know, half of them are double occupancy. You're probably looking at maybe about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty people. That could be in town every night. That might be shopping in the local businesses, going to the restaurants, what have you, patronizing small businesses. And uh, and right now the small businesses in downtown are hurting. The um. And uh, lastly, I'd like to comment that. That, you know, jobs are going to be created on that site as well. You know, we're looking at, you know, somewhere a neighborhood of two hundred and fifty construction permanent jobs being created on that site. But uh, but I think also important here is that uh. My mouth is so dry, I just. But but this project itself is is the kind of project. That's a different difference maker. Seventy-nine hotel rooms exist in downtown Wiltshire. So what is the city of Wiltshire and losing, kind of losing in terms of potential tourism trade? Uh, it's it's substantial and can make a difference. Uh, and I I'd like to, at this point, take a look in, you know, the one page, you'll see a picture of the uh, building. But small, small pictures in the book. You can take a look at that. But what you see there is. Okay, you have a second now, okay. Okay, go to the next page, uh, in your book. You'll see an aerial shot of the lot itself. Right now, it's it's mostly a dirt lot with some asphalt. And there's a number of uh, people that that use that lot uh, for parking. It's been a favorite for riverfront activities for people to park there. It's filled up with a couple hundred cars usually. Mr. Syl hasn't, has never charged anybody for use of the lot there. Parking is always free for the last number of years. And uh. And and you'll see on the next page, some of the issues with that lot. As nice as it looks here. Turn to the next page, you'll see a drawing, like a site plan of the building itself. And then you'll see some yellow markings hanging around it. Those those yellow markings around the site plan of the building. Are the foundations of the Sterling complex. Uh, you see, there's quite a bit there. And in addition to having these foundations, the the side walls, the floors. All still intact, backfilled with all sorts of debris from the demolition. It creates a bit of a formidable problem for us in terms of clearing it out and making it. Usable. Uh, now that's, that could be another million and a half or so in cost, uh, just to make the site suitable. So unlike some of the suburban locations, and I can speak to this directly, that were, were, when I worked at the chamber, we had. You know, we had backfill a number of areas for development up at Highland Park, you know, and and uh. You know, we we put good fill in, we rolled it, compacted it, and it was ready to go for people. Uh, city projects are much more difficult and and require more attention on the part of our civic leaders. So this is a problem, I'm just coming out of the gate. Not to mention the fact that almost twenty years have gone by and no other developer has considered putting a hotel in downtown Wiltshire. I mean. The, you know, the image, the the image that the city possesses unfortunately isn't necessarily the best for. Oh, thank you. My mouth is just. The city. Trying to say it fast before I totally dry up on you guys here, which you might be cheering for. The um. The city has a, you know, has a unique opportunity to do something very dramatic in changing the landscape. And and. This is a real possibility. This is a real project. Now, if you go to. The next page where you have a proposed site plan, this thing. Uh, you'll see, because there was some confusion in terms of how the parking garage. You know, when we initially represented this project, we were looking at doing an underground parking garage into the entire site. Only to find that it was prohibitively expensive. So we had to go back to doing a surface garage. That's when we were doing the ARP application and working with the IDA, uh, and getting this thing done. But uh. That's, that's, that's the way to look. And you also notice one thing that's different from the initial plan is that. We've uh, we built an urban park into the. Concept of the hotel on West Market Street. That would uh, that would just engage people from the street, give a softer look. Also, it differentiates this hotel from some other hotels, competing hotels in around the area. Okay, so if you. Go to the project costs. These are the, these were the latest costs that were presented to us. Estimated total project cost used funds on the next page. That was a number that was given to us by Quandell. Uh, last February. And we're in the process now of trying to update these numbers and hopefully, I'm hoping we'll get some some favorable results. But it shows a thirty-six million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar project. And then on the next page, it just talks about our funding. This is where, this is where we have our problems. The uh, the the private financing, which we've been working with the bank, contrary to what some people kind of dream about when they make comments here. Uh, and uh. What we've come up with is that the maximum that we can actually borrow for a private, a thirty-six million dollar project. With the revenue that's coming in from the hotel is twenty-one million dollars. And that is the, that's the lid. Uh, there's, there's really no room to move. And uh. And then uh, we've received. Seven million dollars uh, from Governor Wolf over a period of four years. Of uh, towards this project. It's a grant. And then uh, when you get down to where. What's needed, it's actually a number like seven point four million. That's the shortfall. And uh, what we're hoping to do today, our strategy for this. Is that if we can get the county to support a portion of that. Then then we will take it back as a last measure to the governor. And ask them to complete the project that they invested in the beginning. Uh, when, when, when the prices were, were not so high as they are today. Um, the other thing too, uh, one question was, was brought up also in comments. About this three million dollars that, you know, what are they going to do with this three million dollars? Put it in the bank account and just spend it and. Who knows if we'll ever get it back or see it or whatever, if the project fails. Well, I'm proposing here is that. The three million dollars that we're requesting. Perhaps can be authorized by council, but not appropriated, that the condition being. That this could be the last measure of financing into the project. If we can't come to the table within a certain amount of time with with the financing for the rest of the project. Then that that award is forfeited. I think that's, I think that's a fair offer. And lastly, the last page, which I found was really revealing. Because I had so many people come to me telling me that, that uh. We're getting too much subsidy into this project. Only to find out. Some of our neighbors. They take a look at the Hilton and Scranton. That project, well, when it started, it was uh, nineteen ninety-nine, it was a twenty-three million dollar project. Ultimately, it ended up at thirty-three million dollars. But uh, thirty-three million dollars, they got ten million dollars in RAP refunds from the state. You know, in in three million from HUD one oh eight and. And two million from, and a land donation from the city. The city donated the land. We purchased the land. Reading Doubletree Project, another one. Back in, this started in two thousand and seven, didn't open until two thousand sixteen. Thirty-two million dollar project when it started, ended up at fifty-six million. They got twenty-seven million dollars in grants into that project. I don't think Wiltshire should expect or deserve any less than what any of these other cities have gotten. From Harrisburg or from the local governments. If you want to make change, it doesn't come free. So as you saw, what Mr. America and his company has done. They've worked very hard. They've been very creative and taken a lot of chances to get things done. And I know back in nineteen, nineteen eighty-eight, when um. Chamber made a fifty thousand dollar loan to Rob, that's almost like seed capital to get him started. Doing the Sally Mae Project on Beakman Street. What a hell of an investment that was. Uh, and I do think that, that, you know, if we as a community, if we start thinking and planning, visioning that. We can do things, we can incorporate the Iron Temple project into this one, you know, into this hotel project. We, you know, there's all kinds of things we can do. It broadens the opportunities for conventions and conferences and activities. It also helps any other hotels in downtown. I mean. I s- I support other hotel development in downtown. Because then if we get enough hotel rooms and work on our venues. And we have a lot of resources, we can change things. So that's, that's uh. The end of my speech. The end of my ability to speak, I think. Excellent. Anybody have any thoughts or questions for me?
Any questions from council?
I uh, I applaud, you know, your record to this. I would encourage it. I think it's a great idea. It would be a beautiful hotel on that corner, which right now is so swift. But I think some other things have to change in the city too, to be a good partner. Um, I always use June Thorpe as an example. People at train school every weekend go down there. People love to go down there. And why don't they like to go to some good restaurants? Little distillery, a microbrewery, it's a nice place to see a concert. And tea shops, I mean, you name it. But I, what I don't think, and I'm not knocking the business. But I don't think you're gonna grow this area proper in circle that. With Dollar Tree, things that sort of, your, your phone, glass smashed and all neon lights. It's just not that kind of. If you're looking for development to make this a better area and bigger growth, we need diversification in. And maybe a microbrewery, in a winery over here, you have the baseball field. We have the arena for minor relief. We have a lot to be proud of. We just need to expand on it. And like you said, beautify this uh, circle. And make it much better and more attractive for people who want to come here for the whole weekend evening. And they do a good job of it in June Thorpe. And I, there's a model right there to follow. And somebody once said, don't reinvent the wheel. I don't think we have to do this, but I think we gotta look at some of the things on the square. That are just. I don't know, they belong in the outskirts. They just don't belong downtown.
You know, if you, if you, if we see. That the investors and the community sees this type of investment taking place in downtown. Others will follow. And uh, there's got to be some risk takers on the front end. And I could tell you, projects, you know, for some of you that are younger on on this board, they are not familiar with. The projects I've worked on over the years while I was at the chamber. But, you know, we did the arena. And we did Pomeroy's until, you know, people wanted to tear Pomeroy's down. We did Woolworths in terms of converting that. We built a thirty-two million dollar movie theater complex from South Main to Washington Street. Now, we, we built three new industrial parks and expanded two others. We created the Diamond City Partnership along with a number of other institutions that are still in operation. With the intent of trying to change this community. And and the better, the attract, the kind of people we want to attract in terms of good, good paying jobs and good companies. Now, we're not a backwater community anymore, and I think we ought to start acting like it, uh, in terms of doing. You know, some, some, some things, sometimes that require a little bit of risk. So that's, that's my lecture, sorry.
Mr. Lauren.
One comment. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I, I think one other aspect that council needs to consider here is that Wiltshire is the county seat. And and we need to look at this more than just a Wiltshire project. We need to look at it highly. At promoting the county, help us promote the river progress. And uh. And I agree with you, Mr. Baruch, that you gotta start somewhere. And the alternative is to do nothing, let that site go. Ten years from now, what will that site look like? What will the square look like? You gotta start somewhere. People start coming from out of town to stay in that hotel. The local people aren't too much going to stay in that hotel, I don't think. But uh, those hundred, a hundred and twenty people daily. Will be walking around shopping, patronizing the local businesses, and that will occur to other nice, solid businesses that come to downtown. Uh, not just your, I don't think technology right now. I agree with Mr. Scavenger. That's a big detriment to downtown. It's not an attraction. And I, but I think what you're trying to do is a great start.
Any other comments, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I want to thank you and Sam for showing up too as well. I mean, uh. You know, I met Sam through you about a year ago. Uh, had some sit downs and some discussions with you and I. Did my diligence on Sam a while back. I looked him up, you know, on the internet and then found articles of of him in in Philadelphia. And the Inquirer, and uh, they were very positive at that time. He took a block down there in Philly that was full of prostitutes and drugs, drug use. And converted it into uh, development. That's something to be proud of today. And I think he had access to Mayor Nutter at the time. If I'm not mistaken, correct, Sam? Right, so, you know, he's invested in this community. Kingston, I actually was able to, through one of his other colleagues, go and see the apartments that that. He renovates over there and uh, took an old industrial site, developed apartments that are rented out. They're full, I think, capacity. Took a hotel that nobody wanted downtown, put apartments in it, you know, and 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 has taken a chance at a restaurant right now. Um, that he just opened up. And I've worked downtown at Rodano's, you know, for Frank. And I've talked to Frank about it, supportive, because he he believes that, you know, like right now, his business is pretty much curvy business. And and if we put something in downtown where people can walk, I think you'd help out Tai Tai, you help out Rodano's, you'd help out Tuscana. You would help out uh, Vesuvio's, any one of those restaurants that are downtown and walking distance. Uh, it's two blocks from here at the courthouse. Think about that, you know, I mean, uh, you have parents that bring their children here to to dorm. You know, when they come in and drop their kids off, you know, they want to maybe stay an extra day or two. They'll patronize the hotel and stay there. You know, uh, initially, and when we talked, you guys wanted to have plans of putting a rooftop restaurant in, and that's been scrapped at this point. Which I think is a travesty in my own, right? Because I think that would have been a great attraction, but it's cost prohibitive. Uh, and and you guys are doing everything that you can to do a value engineering job on on the hotel to make it happen. Uh, it's, it's an eyesore at this point in time, and I think we need to take a collaborative effort as a county. Believe in people that are investing in the community. I know Sam has bought another building, I think, over a while. Because he sees a need in another business sector. And he's invested in the community. I mean, I didn't know him from here to Adam a year ago, but getting to sit down and talk with him. Uh, you know, he's, he's got his heart in the right place, and that's what I look at, at, at people and and. Putting the the tax dollars to work. And quite honestly, I've had the conversation with HUD too, with the debt binders last year. And and the HUD dollars themselves, he said, there is no binder on the U Dag program at this point. You know, I highly doubt HUD will come back after us for six million dollar obligation, which they haven't acted upon at this point in time. If they see development going on at that particular location, at that particular site, because that was the pad. Initially, where that money was supposed to be invested. And if there's job creation there. I don't think HUD's going to come back and slap their government agency with with uh, any type of violation. Uh, or look for their money back because we're using it for something that was intended for original. Uh, that money's been recycled, uh, in the U State, in some of the dialogue that I've had with you, where you dag. Program administrator back in the day, right?
Pittsburgh.
In Pittsburgh, so, you know, that program's defunct. There's no binder on that program. That that money's been loaned out. It's come back to the county. It's been sitting in the bank. We've taken a half a million dollars. We bought a private house with it at one point in time. And put back less into that bank account than than what was uh. Given to purchase that house. So, you know, don't tell me we haven't spent it on something that was probably not in scope. You know, I don't think buying somebody's home because of litigation was was something in scope. That was an economic development. That was just. Get us out of a. Issue. So I think if we take that money invested, you know, in the right areas. Uh, we'll have a rate of return for the future for the city of Wiltshire, the county seat. You know, I think it will help downtown tremendously, you know, in that whole three or four block radius. Uh, including with the iron, I mean. voted on giving them ARP money. I I remember the person saying that we're going to have artists come in. Well, they need a place to stay. If you want them to stay in Wiltshire, township. Closer to the venue, so they don't have to trek so far. So those, those are things that we need to think about. Have a vision.
Let me just uh, add one thing. I, you know, over the course of my current. Let me just uh, off on one thing. I, you know, over the course of my career, I've been criticized for for thinking out of box sometimes. And I know one investment that I'm, I'm hope proves to be a really good one is the IR. I know, uh, there was a time we went out and purchased it with the intent of not necessarily developing it, but just trying to keep it from being demolished because it's a really important asset to the community. And hopefully that realization comes true, people working with it. But, but if I can disclose one last thing.
I have a question.
Oh, oh, you, well, here, let me, all right, go ahead. I want to say nice things to you.
You have a piece of building, you said.
Yes. Oh, I don't have it with me, but yeah, there's, there was one of these, that was done years ago, actually. Mike's gonna require that one to the finance end.
I want to see it.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get.
And what's your financial plan?
Financial plan?
Yes.
It's, it's on that one page where I.
That's the construction.
What are you referring to?
Where do you get your finance? Where, show us how it's built together.
We're working with, with the Benedict Town.
But there should be a plan.
Well, there will be, but we have to get the, we have, they, they, they assigned us with two things. Raise some additional dollars and try to reduce the cost. So we're doing value engineering at the present time, and we're getting a new construction estimate that we do probably speak to.
The other comment, and I heard everybody on that side. New day money. I agree with you. There's still a question in my mind. I would hope that we would have something from HUD on a piece of paper that would say that one is a deal. To do something like that, and in three years from now, they say to us, you owe us install us. County's not gonna be in a position to pay that. So that's important to have that kind of information going forward. I don't know how uh, do a deal without having one. The other thing is, and this is also important to me. I think everybody in this room has said, and many times, whatever we have money for, we want to do roads and bridges. As you know, we have a tremendous amount with second largest number in town. We struggled. We struggled with making them up to standards. That would be my first priority. But I think there's more assistance there. You get a positive result. Some other part. I mean, I think uh, Sam said it's his dream. I think it's a dream. I think it's, you know, we'd be lucky if uh, we have to put it all together, but in my mind, there's certain things that have to come forward.
Well, you can't get done without your support. Cause I've, that actually, but at least. Well, hopefully that'll come.
What is, right now, today?
They have, they have offered us, uh, they'll, they'll entertain. We go back for alert us sometime in the future. They're not, there's, if you're talking dollars.
Yeah, dollars.
No, no, we haven't, we haven't seen any dollars.
No, it's, it's a project from Wolf's Fair City. And they had some money, thirty seven million dollars.
But is, is that, is that any reason not to look? Is it, well, but that's a question of leadership, I think, more than anything else.
That might be your mind. I don't believe that's a lot of.
So I know we talked about U-DAG money. I know that the past, the county's given out U-DAG loans. Would you guys be interested in maybe a loan or like a line of credit, some other type of funding other than just a grant?
If there, if there was some type of perhaps a forgivable loan based on performance, because right now we can't borrow more than twenty one million. That's the max.
No, you do borrow from the county.
Yes. See, here's, here's what, I mean, you're talking about different, what are the solutions to dealing with this problem? Well, one is, we scale the project back. We just get rid of the conference center. We just, we can go ahead and build just a straight hotel. We can do that now. But, but the impact is that conference center attached to the hotel. And uh, that's where we get the impact. We start bringing three or four hundred people into the community through these meetings and conferences. You know, doing some sizable type of activities that will leave a lot of people here and stay in the hotels, visit the restaurants, shop on our retail store. You know, I've, it reminds me going back to the old days of, of, of the arena, when, when we had, um, you know, we thought we had support from the county and then all of a sudden it backed off at the last minute. We ended up going to a referendum and uh, losing, you know, costing the uh, the arena probably about fifteen hundred seats that could have been put in there. Um, it's operated in the black, correct me if I'm wrong, up to this point. And uh, it has been a real asset, an economic generator in terms of what it's done in Highland Park. I, I don't have some of the numbers that, that were presented earlier in terms of what your tax revenues out of Highland Park are. Um, but we got an exit, we got Monday Street and, and a ton of taxes. Uh, so, um, but the county, just closing on this, I keep saying closing. The, the county has, and from my experience, my seventeen years of working at the chamber and doing development, the county has been the most critical player at the table in every project that I've worked on. They were always the last ones in to see what it gave us, gave just enough to get the projects over the hump so they can be actually developed. And I, I can name any one of the projects that I've worked on, that, that previously talked about, there's been county participation in everyone. And I don't think, uh, I, I don't think they, we, we, at that time, or even to this time, have really let the county down.
Mr. Baruch, just to clarify one issue raised about financing. I believe the twenty one million that you would be seeking is the maximum allowed, a total borrowing from all sources, correct? You can't borrow twenty one million from the banks and five million from the county, correct? That's not allowed. Okay. Cause it's just like a mortgage on a house. You can't go borrow from, you know, from banks.
And also, and also I've been working with the uh, the congressman's office and trying to get a waiver to do a the US Department of Agriculture loan guarantee on that twenty one million. And that would be certainly a strong enhancement for a lender.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Baruch. Okay, number nine, discussion uh, and presentation regarding the contract with ETA Insurance Group for Employment Benefits Services.
We have an hour long video.
Excellent. We have nowhere to be.
Yeah. Well, thank you. For insurance consultant brokerage services. So this is something that we had done in the past. Um, and we were under contract back a few years back. So the, the contract expired. And we've just been utilizing our prior um, broker on a case by case basis. So um, with our cost saving efforts coming into the budget, um, at the guidance of Ms. Croco, we decided we were going to move forward and revisit this. So um, in the RFP, we requested, um, the RP request included a review of our current stop loss, medical, dental vision for prescription plans. Um, and we were looking for someone to serve as liaison between county employees and with our um, TPA, which is Highmark, uh, third party administrator, administrator. So uh, we formed a committee. It was Controller Griffith, um, Deputy Controller Tom Scola, Jessica Beisler, our HR Director, and myself. We reviewed the six responses that we got. We scored them accordingly and we interviewed the top two that we uh, that we were considering. And um, we decided that we were going to recommend ETA Insurance Services. Uh, Joe Pillar is here tonight to present um, what um, specifics we were going to be, we're, we're going to be going into negotiations with them for a contract. So I'll let Joe.
Thanks, Jen. I think you said a forty five minute presentation. She meant four to five minutes. Okay, uh, you bet. My associate Dan will hand us some. We have the slides up on the uh, screen here, which is pretty nifty, by the way. I was watching it in hallway. So that's pretty, pretty exciting. Very, very good technology. You have enough, Dan? Okay. My name's Joe Pillar. I'm here with my associate Dan Soma. Our agenda today, which can only take four to five minutes, not is who is ETA Insurance Group? Why are we here? And as Jen mentioned, we're going to talk about the RFP, some highlights of the consulting proposal that I believe all of council either received or should be receiving and whatnot. Who is ETA Insurance Group? Uh, we've been doing business in Pennsylvania since nineteen ninety nine, right before the turn of the uh, decade, twenty four years. Full service agency, benefits consulting firm located minutes from Jim Thorpe in beautiful Neskaowning, Pennsylvania, um, Carbin County. So, uh, and it's, it's correct, sir. The uh, the success of Jim Thorpe permeates throughout the county and it's just made the county uh, so much more enjoyable to live and work there. And that's very exciting. Uh, our best experience has been in employee benefits. Primarily group health insurance. That's what we started on twenty four years ago. I spent a lot of time working for hospital systems, physician office, billing, uh, insurance companies and put it to work in my own company. Group benefits is our main uh, platform, group healthcare for employee benefits. The partnerships that we have with several TPAs, including Highmark, they're the, they're right down the street here, if you're not in the room or listening online, but they've been very good. They've been very successful. I think under the Highmark organization, Blue Cross is very vibrant here in northeast Pennsylvania. And uh, it's been a very successful relationship with that company. We have access to consortiums, other specialty carriers and markets. And we're the consultant of record, uh, proud to say for twenty four years with the county of Carbin and the county of Schuylkill. Why are we here? We're here to review some highlights, not to drive you crazy, but to review some highlights of the RFP that was put out by Jen and her team. And I want to thank Walter and Tom and the HR Director Jessica uh, for their assistance with that, with that committee and the process we took. Um, highlights of our proposal in our part one services is more of a day to day liaison, a day to day assistant to the HR and the benefits department. You know, to have that ability, not physically always being there, uh, we don't want to occupy another office, but we would be there on a regular basis uh, to assist the HR department. We're only a phone call away. I have a team back in Neskaowning who would answer uh, claims, not only from the HR department, but also from the employees of the county. We're not here to replace Blue Cross and what Blue Cross does in order to pay our claims, but we want to provide that extra level of service. Because sometimes the providers don't bill correctly and the insurance companies don't pay correctly. So we want to make sure the county and the employees are getting the most for the money that you're spending, which is quite a bit uh, on benefits. On-site employee meetings would take a load off of the HR department where the HR department has to meet with new employees on a monthly, sometimes a bi-weekly basis. New employees are coming into the county. If that's, uh, there's a, a lot of employees coming in that need to be educated about their benefits, so they understand how their dental plan works, how their medical plan and prescription program work. How can you, how can they get the most out of their coverage? A direct line we could set up so they're not, uh, again, it doesn't happen in today's day and age with a cell phone. You can call anywhere. But we would have a dedicated local line that the employees can call, uh, have access to our organization uh, for questions to assist them with uh, with their coverages. Ongoing compliance review and ACA reporting, there's a lot of federal laws, the ACA law, the Affordable Care Act that comes into play that we need to monitor and make sure the county is in compliance with those laws and regulations. Improve the communication with Highmark, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. They're, they're right across town. I can probably throw a stone at their buildings. Improve the relationship, uh, not that it's tarnished in any, in any means, but improve the services that they give to the county and to ultimately to the employees and their family members. Teladoc uh, services like an app, how to find an ID card. You have to scramble because they have to take a little Missy Jones to the doctor and you don't have an ID card. You have to call the HR department looking for an ID card. If we can show them and teach them about all the tools that Highmark has in order to provide a better, better robust program. Stop loss coordination, not to get into the nitty, nitty gritty details of the program, but the county is self insured, so it's, the county doesn't pay a premium every month to Blue Cross to cover your, your services. Basically, you pay for your claims, you pay for the administrative services of Highmark. And then if there's a uh, a claim that goes beyond a certain dollar amount, whatever that might be, the county gets reimbursed from what is known as a stop loss carrier. And there's one in place. Uh, should be getting reimbursement on a regular basis if there's high claims, so the county's just not constantly paying out of their pocket for, for the high claims. Just to recap how we bill for our fee, we bill per employee, P E P M stands for per employee per month. That's how you're billed from Blue Cross. That's how we bill at a much lower number, six dollars and twenty five cents. We talked to the committee about, we submitted our RFP, uh, which also includes the cost of the ACA reporting that's required to the government and also the ten ninety fives, which is like a benefit. Most of us uh, will get ten ninety fives or ten ninety fours. Those are like um, medical W twos where the government wants to see uh, what type of healthcare program you had during the prior year with your, when you file your tax return. So we would produce those. So that's included in our fee. Part two of the RFP included more of a shared savings kind of scenario that we would look at savings opportunity that are on the table that we could utilize Blue Cross in a different way. Uh, we could use some of their different networks. You know, you have HMO, PPO, we're all consumers of healthcare. And there's different programs that Blue Cross offers that sometimes just don't trinkle down into the HR department or the benefits department or the finance department of organizations to implement to the employee, the end user, to find better ways to improve care at a lower cost, which ultimately saves the employer money. So we would look at an example is a high performance network to incorporate here. It's not changing anything with the current Blue Cross coverage. It's only improving upon it. Uh, not taking anything away because employees, most of the employees here, I guess, are protect, not protected, but they have the bargaining agreements that we really can't change their co-pay or their deductible. And we certainly don't want to take Blue Cross away from them. That's why the sky's blue in northeast Pennsylvania, because they're so, they're so dominant as an organization up here and they're performing very well under Highmark. Other savings examples uh, that we've used is bring in paperless enrollments. Instead of you just hired John Smith to work for the county and John has to fill out all his paperwork for his healthcare and his vision and his dental. And we would institute a program at no cost to the county. I think I heard earlier uh, someone talk about the new, uh, what is it, New World? The New World system to integrate a benefits enrollment platform so we can uh, eliminate paper. So when you hire a new employee, you would enroll online, enroll with the assistance of our team. And then the uh, the electronic feeds would go to the insurance companies, very similar to like how Expedia works. Or Priceline or Kayak when you're buying, uh, you're going to Florida or Tennessee and you need to buy the airline, you need to get the rental car, you need to pick up the Dolphin excursion and everything is coordinated through that, that uh, unit, through that site. Let's just say Expedia, not to give them a plug. But um, it incorporates everything into that enrollment platform. Then the employees could do a lot more uh, self-service if they need a copy of their benefit booklet or they need to show their spouse what kind of coverage they have. That would be incorporated into the benefits platform, which is another savings idea that we would work with the committee on implementing. We wouldn't implement any savings idea unless the committee or the council ultimately would approve it. Uh, if that would so be your choice. I do have a small video, um, because I don't have a bottle of water, but this, this little video is produced by Highmark. I just thought it would be nice because it, many employers, uh, this is developed for employers. Let's see, somebody's pushing the button, but there's no sound. Let's see, somebody's pushing the button, but there's no sound. Oh, well, it was a little video about the High Performance Network called Performance Flex Blue. And that's okay, there's no volume, but it's covered throughout the state. And that's just one idea that we may present to the committee at some point in time. So we'll just skip that. Who's working the mouse? That's pretty cool. Too far, too far. You got it over there. In summary, the RFP, we put in for a four-year contract effective November 1st. The employee plan renews January 1st, the current the current program. And there's what they call an open enrollment, for those of you that have open enrollment, perhaps at your company's or place of work. The open enrollment starts, the HR Director, I believe, said sometime in the latter part of November. So we want to get a jumpstart on that, hopefully get involved with assisting open enrollment around November 1st. To reiterate, reiterate our part fee, it's $6.25 per employee per month. The savings side where we'd want to share in some of the savings, we're still discussing those ideas with the committee. If we were to institute, because the part one is we get actively involved in helping the HR department run the benefits so they can concentrate on hiring and other compliance issues relative to personnel. The any savings that we would come up with would be worked out through the committee and we would reconcile that every spring, maybe around May 1st, we felt after each year. Lastly, just a few clients. How did I get the bro of Jim Thorpe on there? But we're very proud of the clients. That's Jim Thorpe is just the main recognition thing, but we also do business with the Hazleton City, the Hazleton area school district, Jim Thorpe area school district, both Carbin and Schuylkill County. And there's some of our TPA and our partner vendors work with other counties throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So there's a unique ability and a unique talent that's that we have that we utilize for all our clients. So it's not just public sector. It's also the private sector. We have Valley Harrison Arena Center, a bunch of others. Lastly, next steps are questions. If you want to do that tonight, we'd like to provide open enrollment assistance to the HR department early in November, if that could be accomplished. And we could been begin work immediately. And our phone numbers and our names, Joe Pillar, Dan Soma are up there on the board. But if you have any questions or comments, or those could be worked back through us and we can provide those before your next meeting or however the committee or the council works in decision-making. We'd be glad to assist.
Any questions from council members?
Six and a quarter employees per month. We have roughly 1,400, 1,500.
It's a, no, it's a, it's a good question, sir. It's based on the number of employees on the plan. It's right around 1,0100, like how many are actively on the Blue Cross plan? So you're, I think we budgeted a little bit for the ACA, so it might be in the 80 range plus. Eighty-seven, fifty a month?
Eight thousand seven hundred and one. So a hundred grand, a hundred grand a year. Okay.
And I don't know, because I we just replied to the RFP, we don't know what the current arrangement is or there's Jen's team could probably research that a little bit.
Go ahead, Mr. McGinnley.
I understand that your product may, or might be last or better. All the details of the plan and the contract that you've worked out, you can come back.
Right.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Anyone else?
Put that there, but I have a Highmark. Didn't do that on purpose, I just noticed that. Not paid by Highmark. We get paid, most of our cases were paid by the employer for additional work in this regard. Same with Carbin County, Schuylkill County, other other groups.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we already had the presentation for number 10 for the Hotel Sterling. So if there's nothing further, I'll let public comment. A couple slips. Mr. Raybo.
I have two things. One, on the development, just wanted to answer the what was presented as far as a third-class city that has two universities and a convention center, and it's also a county seat. Allentown, which is the county seat of Lehigh County. They had in 2011 a program that was a prototype from the state called the Neighborhood Improvement Zone. And if any of you recall, Allentown's downtown was pretty much a ghost town before 2011. After that Neighborhood Improvement Zone development spurred and Lehigh County now has another problem, which is they need residential housing because of all the commercial development and businesses downtown. So I don't understand how Wilkes-Barre could not go and solicit for the state through their state legislators, through Mr. Krasinski and Mr. Marty Flynn, you know, and say, look, Governor Shapiro, we could use this. You know, Wilkes-Barre could use this, the Neighborhood Improvement Zone. And by the way, to Mr. Laskowski's point about Jim Thorpe, they had a mini-me version of that called the City Revitalization Improvement Zone, which is called PRIS. And I do believe Tamaka right now has that in place for their downtown. So I think there are other solutions. And yeah, it takes a little leadership, but it takes it on the municipal end first. And then usually the county signs on to that once, you know, they need the support from others. So I think that's something to be explored. But as far as I do definitely agree with Mr. McGinnley's, you know, the financial plan needs to be specified and also HUD. You know, and I I said at the redevelopment meeting and I said it here tonight, an indemnification hold harmless in case the project scope or the use of the funds changes hands like it did in the past and nobody was notified. I think that needs to all be in place before any kind of finalization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Mr. Sahaski?
Josh Sahaski, Mr. McGinnley, I'm going to answer one of your questions that you asked, Mr. Baruk. See, they can't, they won't go to ask Wilkes-Barre for grants because he said on, Mr. Baruk said on 3/22/18, and you could all look this up on YouTube, put Wilkes-Barre City Council, 3/22/18. It's at 50 minutes, 40 seconds. This is a quote from Mr. Baruk. I just listened to this while I was outside. "We are not going to come in and ask for any grants from the city to build the buildings. This is going to be privately funded. We are not going to ask for a subsidy on this." So he already said that they're not going to ask for any grants from the city. He also said that this was privately funded. That's why I keep saying that he lied because he said this will be privately funded and it's not being privately funded because, you know, the amount, you know, the multiple grants that they are asking for. So I, you know, I, that's why I just always questioned, you know, anything that Mr. Baruk says because you don't know if it's the truth. And like I said, y'all could pull that up on your phones and check it yourselves. Like, I know you said it's not nice to call people liars, but he he lied, like, he he was representing you and he lied. It's not, I don't blame you. You, but I do blame him. My question about like, okay, they said that they could get a maximum of 21 million. They have 7 million from the state. They want 3 million from you guys, so they'd still have to fill that to get to their their total. But then what happens if there's change orders and then this project costs more? Like, you know what I mean? I like how much, if they're not going to be able to get any more financing, like, like, don't get me wrong, I I want you to get.
Mr. Sahaski, you have to, you have to address.
Okay, okay.
Can't address the members of the public.
Oh, I hope you got, I hope that the project gets built. But my, you know, my concerns are that what happens if they cannot get any more funding? And, you know, it comes into a bigger shortfall than a few million dollars and maybe it gets to $10 million because something else happens where the price goes up and things don't get built. And this public comment, so I can say anything about anything, everything's wide open. I don't have to just go on agenda. Yeah, yeah, county, yeah, county business. Yeah, yeah, I got you. Um, Contra Series, that's that's you guys then, right? Um, I did, I worked bartending for party on the patio for years. I just really think you guys should have more of those, like, I don't know, threes, threes. You're wasting your time with three, do like six or eight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Griffith?
Well, I guess the comment is that, you know, the the $6 million is not up for grabs by Udag. Going to Mr. Urban, he spoke to Nate Abbe a year ago. I just spoke to him at 4:30, spoke to him personally. I'll get it in writing, obviously in an email, I'll share it with council. The money is not available. The finding of the inspector general is still binding. That's what he told me. You guys want to spend the money on a wish or a hunch? As Mr. Urban says, well, I doubt very much you're going to come for it. Make Mr. Urban responsible for the money. If he comes back and tells us we have to pay that. If that's what we want to do. You want to put the taxpayers at risk for $6 million? That's okay. You guys want to do that? You want to take them to court, sue them? That's taxpayers' money too. Why do we want to go down that road? Why do we just not get a decision from HUD and find out what the deal is with the money and move on from there before we act at all? Pass ordinance that mean nothing? Get the answer from HUD first and then go with your ordinances. Why do we always do things backwards here? So we end up paying more money for legal fees and all the other stuff that we end up paying for. And the taxpayers end up paying because we don't want to have a 7-Eleven on the corner. Ask, ask Mr., um, the guy who owns Best Western, Mr. Janetti, ask him what his occupancy rate is there at that hotel conference center. That's a hotel conference center. Best Western, ask him what his occupancy rate is before you go looking for a new one. I'll bet you it's 50% or less in the hotel. Conference center has one conference there maybe a month. The last one was the NAACP. That's it. Wilkes-Barre Cities donated nothing to this project. Wilkes-Barre Cities get made money on the project. They got paid for the lot. If you remember when we ripped it down, we got nothing out of that. We paid everything. City's always making money. Reality check, nothing's coming to downtown Wilkes-Barre via hotel conference center. It's not happening. You want to bring people downtown, make it a safe place and put things on there. George Brown has done more for the city of Wilkes-Barre in the past two years than any mayor we've had there. With opening things up, having conferences, having bands, having the Beach Boys come, all of that stuff is great for downtown. Hotel conference centers isn't going to make it. How much money have the developer have of his own money invested in the project? Haven't heard that, 21 million in borrowed money and grant money, how much money of his own money is in this project? What's the timeline? When's the shovel going to ground? What if he hits the ground and he finds out there's mediation issues in the ground and now the project stopped? And we have all the money allocated. None of those questions have been asked. I hesitate to have this council approve an ordinance to give any money from you, Doug, unless you know for sure it's available.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Mr. Griffin?
Greg Griffin, Swarsville. It was great to hear a Miracle representative say something about housing with these KOZ and LERTA companies. Council needs to use cautions on future LERTA and KOZ tax-free grants with these large corporations. Merkel's doing 1.5 million square feet a year. 65 new businesses, 22 are manufacturing with many jobs. All these jobs will require homes for these employees, possibly many people moving here from other areas. So it's good the council is helping create new jobs with the LERTAs and the KOZs after you're after you're looking through it and you're granting them. But council needs to use its real estate committee to work with companies receiving these LERTA and KOZ grants. Merkel talks about fiscal responsibility. And I'm very impressed that Merkel is doing some housing. I don't know if they have any housing built, if it's planned. But it's the first time I heard any KOZ or LERTA applicant talk about housing, which is very great that Merkel is on board with this. Council needs to question each future LERTA and KOZ applicant, which are they going to help? Because they're going to be bringing outside employees. Our our citizens' rents are going to go up to $1,600 for half the double. You're not going to be able to find a house. There are six builders, six bidders on every house that's for sale. We have to remember our current, citizens' rents will go up. Council's responsibility to current citizens to safeguard reasonable rents and affordable homes or to help provide more, not to keep granting LERTA and KOZs with with abandon. And this this talked about, oh, it's all local, local residents going to be working here. Really? If it goes to 15 to 23 hours an hour, sure, he's losing our employees. Where are they going to get them? We're losing 1,000 young people every six years. That's 1,000 less employees. We're going to lose another 1,000 young people in six years if our opioid settlement committee doesn't do its job. All those young people who died, they're not going to work on any Mr. Merkel's plans. So we have a big problem and I hate to be the doomsayer here, but we can't be an illusion here. We're bringing in outside people with these LERTAs and KOZs. There's all senior citizens here. There's a brain drain. These kids are leaving here when they quit college. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Council needs to do its job.
Anybody else from the public, public comment? Anybody on the Zoom?
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. McGinnley. Yep.
And one I'd like to thank kind of managing the staff for dealing with the piping issues. That was really quick action and I think it will help us forget any other major issues. Yesterday this morning, I had the opportunity to go up to your elections warehouse, we're doing our testing of machines. And excuse me, doing a very good job, it'd be going on all week. You know, people have time, they could stop in. They have a very good plan. Plan I heard there today is really a positive plan. I'm looking forward to that plan bringing good results on November. But the the young ladies, it was all, no, one gentleman, he's seen a great job and I agree with all the efforts. And I hope that in November we see a very positive result.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnley.
Jason Carr said he's on the phone, he wants to.
Oh, okay, he did have his hand up before, but he put it down. So, Mr. Carr, go ahead. Mr. Carr, you can go ahead.
Hello, council, this is, thank you, Mr. Lombardo. This is Jason Carr from Salersburg, Pennsylvania. It's it's great to see that, you know, Mr. Silla is there with Mr. Miracle. Mr. Miracle is an outstanding business person and he definitely deserves the tax breaks that he's requesting. He's done a tremendous amount for this, for the county. I think more so than anything else, this shows the inexperience of Ramil de Crocamo County Manager, even introducing this $3 million to be allocated possibly to this hotel that's supposed to be built in downtown Wilkes-Barre. It's interesting, Mr. Miracle probably has $3 million in his right-hand pocket right now. And if he thought that it was a worthwhile investment, if Mr. Miracle thought it was a worthwhile investment, he would definitely work with HNN Investments to get that hotel built. But I'm pretty sure as a fellow businessman, understanding whether a project is viable or not, the reason why he doesn't offer his help to Sam Silla and Mr. Baruk is because it's not profitable. And all it's going to end up happening is it's going to be donated, if it's built, to Kings or Wilks. And the sad part about it is no one's asking questions on this council about how much. And the sad part about it is no one's asking questions on this council about how much money is Sam Baru- uh, uh. Baruk taking out of his pocket and investing? How much is Sam Silla taking out and investing? And who are the private investors? Or that are going to profit off of all this public money? No one's asking these questions and Ramilva sits there in the corner shaking. Because she's going to have to answer to the, the people of Loser and County when this deal goes bad. Or it doesn't get built and we have to repay back millions of dollars. Be- because there's backroom deals going on right now. Somebody better wake up in that council.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Just so far, just so everybody's clear. County manager did not present that vote.
Go ahead, Mr. Lescavage.
Sitting here a year ago, we're leaps and bounds of head, uh, ahead of where we were. Under the prior manager, we don't know who that was. So congratulations. You did a great job so far and keep on going because we're in the right direction, doing a lot of great things.
Mr. Urban.
And, you know, initially I didn't support you, uh, you know, and I was wrong and I had my doubts about you, but you and I have talked numerous times. Uh, for the record too, I mean. I've had a, a conversation with Cartwright's office. Um, regarding the Sterling project and trying to get, you know, some answer from HUD. Uh, but even the Democratic side, the Biden administration and, and the US Senator Casey's office. And Cartwright's office have not been able to, to get ahold of HUD to produce a letter. You know, to, to, to help us out and that is the truth. So, you know, there are some issues politically, you know, that, that, that are working against them because of. The letter and I, I have spoken to the damn Biden. Um, I have an email where I talked to Michael Horvath, his boss, to have him call me. You know, you know, I've sat down with Andy Riley for full disclosure. I've had a conversation with Mayor Brown. Krasinski, we've had meetings uh or a meeting and, and. It has, a vision starts somewhere. And, and whether it's the city that, that takes the lead on it or the county that takes the lead on it, yes, the county takes the lead on a lot of things, you know. And we've given out millions in ARP money. And we're taking a risk with those projects and, and to some of those projects, they didn't get everything that they asked for. And we don't know how much or how many projects we've impacted or, or in a negative light by not giving them the. Full amount, but everybody that participated in, in that process got something. Here we have Mr. Miracle here who's a success story, but he didn't start off that way. He took a chance with something and people gave him an opportunity here in this county. And now he's one of, he's the biggest, you know, uh, taxpayer in the region. And that was years ago and I happened to. True story, one day I was in the back, I, I opened up one of the binders, just coincidentally pulled an old minutes book to read it. And I happened to just open it. And it happened to have your name in it on a piece of land that I think you bought for maybe twenty-five thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken. And it was the commissioners back in McCowsky and, and probably Cross that assisted you in, in that deal. And, and. Today, you know, you're a success story. Sam is, is an investor that came here into this county. You know, emigrated, I think, from Albania. Like I said, I've gotten to know the man. Uh, just like other people know investors in this community. He has his heart and soul into this area. To give him a chance is to give him a hand up and, and. He, you know, personally assures us that he will give back more to this community if that goes up. Sometimes you have to take people's word for, for things. It, it might be speculative, but. You know, we can put all the agreements in place, so it's all legal. But I think, you know, just like we took a chance on, on Bob Miracle many, many years ago, twenty years ago. Or, or longer than that. Um, we should take a chance at other investors that decide to come to this county. That want to invest in this community, that want to take a block that's been like a mud pit for twenty-plus years. And, and you know, yes, it could be. It'll go on the tax rolls if it's a hotel, but it's not going to be on the tax rolls if it goes to Kings or Wilks. We can, he can. Block off that lot tomorrow and say, nobody can park here. That across chaos for PNC, the people that, that reside there and that whole section downtown. He could also give it back. It'd probably go to Kings or Wilks because that's probably who would develop it and then it's off the tax books forever. Uh, it'll be nonprofit. We won't get any tax dollars for it. We'll have to provide emergency services to it for, pretty much for nothing. We don't even go after the, the college for a pilot, which Wilkes-Barre City does. Um, so, you know. Quite honestly, I, I think. We need to foster people with visions and, and um. He's approached us, he's a constituent here, he pays a lot of taxes, he's rehabbing some of the worst buildings around. With his own private tax dollars. This is a partnership that I think, you know, can work. Mr. Baruk has many years of experience in this community and in this county. I didn't know him. You know, uh, and up until last year. That's the truth. I had my reservations about him because of my own father and the preconceived notions that. You know, they didn't get along sometimes when, when it came to uh the commissioner days. But I got to know him. And he's done a lot of great things in this community. Uh, you know, you have to trust in some of the people that were some of the predecessors here in this community. That have truly have a track record of being successful. His heart's in the right place. He helped put the arena up. He's helped Bob Miracle grow his business in the past. You know, we're asking for one project to clean up two blocks from here, to make something like coming over that bridge from Kingston every day. It's an eyesore. You know, Mr. Wlovich. Mr. Raybo, you both are on the Blight Committee. You haven't done crap yet, but like. This is an opportunity to prove yourself and clean it up. So let's all work together to do that. Not, not be a naysayer.
Get me an appointment for the Blight Committee for the citizens.
All right, Mr. Raybo.
But what I'm saying is, is that, you know, let's not be naysayers. Let's work collaboratively, you know, take that negative mindset. And, and toss it aside once in a while and let's make something, let's make something more positive. You know, i- instead of being a negative.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All in favor? Thank you, meeting's adjourned.